Good morning. We have a little bit of tidying up from yesterday. Mr. Redden does have a few questions for Mr. Harkins. But before he returns to the witness box, I'd just like to formally incorporate the video footage that was produced, that Mr. Major took of the aircraft dropping retardant on various fires within the mine on the afternoon of the 9th as part of Exhibit 8. We have it here. So if Mr. Harkins could return to the witness box. I think if we just incorporate it as part of Exhibit 8.
Mr. Harkins, I remind you that you've made enough of an inquiry.
Mr. Harkins, you were asked questions yesterday about your statement in particular, an email sent on the 8th of February from Mr. Roach, which is page 46 of your statement, possibly page 46 of the statement you brought up.
Yes.
It's an extra seven. Now, at the bottom of page 47, it shows it's a message from ICC to Rildon at 5:24, but I think it's generally accepted that it's probably a glitch and it's probably 4:24 summer time. Correct?
Correct.
And in fairness, it does say 5:24 AEDT, which is straight in the eastern hemisphere.
Correct.
So, without any message, and then at 4:29, five minutes later, Nick Demetrius sent that through to you and Mark Nash.
No, he sent it to Ellen Roach and Mark Nash.
Oh, sorry, Ellen Roach and Mark Nash.
Correct.
Yes. Now, and he said that this is the latest mapping from Phoenix model that had one hours tomorrow night, worst case scenario, this may be the fire protection. And you read that?
I did.
What did you understand one hours tomorrow night mean to me?
I thought it meant that it would be 1 AM Monday morning.
Okay. I could take you then possibly to page 49, I think it is, which is the actual document, being the model, I should say. And did you look at that model?
I did on BlackBerry, yes.
Yes. And did you notice in the top left corner, the time that was noted was 2-10-2014 at 1:59 AM?
No, I did not.
Do you see it there now?
Just.
Accepting that, you'd accept, would you not, that the 2-10-2014 is in the American dating system, a reference to 10-2-2014 as we would write it?
The 10th of February, yes.
Yeah. And at 1:59 AM rather than, sorry, and the 10th of February was the Monday, was it not?
That's correct.
And 1:59 AM rather than, as suggested in the letter, 1 AM?
Correct, yes.
Was that a distinction that you noted at the time?
No, because I didn't see that particular piece of writing in the top left-hand corner.
But in any event, you accepted it as being for the worst-case scenario for 1 AM on Monday?
That's correct. That's what was in the email.
Now, Mr. Roach sent that on to you at 5:35 on Saturday, the 8th?
Correct.
And then, 6:41, I'm sorry, yes, at 6:41, I should say.
Oh, yes, sorry.
6:41. The 5:35 seems to be sending it to himself, so.
Yes, sorry.
At 6:41, it's sent to you.
Yes.
With the message, which confirms it's got a timestamp of 1 AM on Monday morning.
Correct.
Now, he said that he would spend some time with Nick tomorrow to get a better real-time modeling as the day goes by. Just wanted to keep him in the loop. I've not shared this info with Rock Dugan or Dave Shanahan as yet. I prefer to wait and see what the weather does.
Correct.
Wind is due around lunchtime tomorrow. You read that at the time?
I did.
Now, you've given evidence in response to a question from the professor that, as far as you're concerned, this was just for your information, you were not the gateway of information.
No, this is, just wanted to keep you in the loop, and if it was for broader dissemination, Ellen would do that.
So he wasn't requesting your permission not to afford on to Dugan or Shanahan at that time?
No, not at all.
Mr. Roach is now supposed to be called, so he could be asked a question as to why and this, but did you get back to Mr. Roach to say whether or not this was acceptable to behave in the way he had indicated to you?
I responded in an email, which indicated, from my reading, that suggested that there would be some sort of attack on the northern batters at 1 AM on Monday morning, is that correct? Ellen then rang me after receipt of my email.
Were you comfortable with his approach of holding that information from Dugan and Shanahan at that stage to enable him to spend some time with Nick Demetrius?
Yes, I was.
Why was that?
Because at this stage, what I've got is a 1 AM model for Monday morning, and that Ellen was going to follow up Nick Demetrius on Sunday morning, and that seemed to be a reasonable response to a model that, as I said, whilst I understood what the dots meant, I didn't understand the basis or where this model comes from.
The next morning, you say that you were watching your emails?
Correct.
And why was that?
Well, I was waiting on any further advice and any other information regarding the day.
All right, thank you for that. Now, possibly the witness could be shown the attachment to the witness statement of Mr. Jeremiah, which is document cfa.009.001.pf. You have a, there should be two pages there.
Oh, sorry, it's on the back, yes.
The first page, do you see that modeling?
I do.
Was that modeling, was this document right, provided to you at the time?
No, this, I haven't seen this.
Do you see that it seemingly shows the fire in the sense extending from Hearns Oak across towards the northern batters of the mine?
Yes, I do.
Now, this one is showing, this is the position at 9 AM on the Sunday, the 9th of February 2014. Do you see that?
I do.
If you had have received that piece of modeling, are you able to indicate to the board whether your reaction would have been the same to Mr. Roach's suggestion?
I can indicate that it certainly wouldn't have been. If I received.
Can you explain to the board why it would be different?
Well, as I understand it, this would suggest that at nine o'clock on Sunday morning, there'd be substantial fire activity around and from the red dots spotting into the mine.
Even if it was indicated to be the worst-case scenario, was the one for early Monday?
The nine o'clock in the morning would worry me. I mean, I would immediately call Ellen, I wouldn't have sent a pack in an email and suggested that I want more information, but I would have expected that if I'd received this from Ellen Roach, sorry, Mr. Roach, he would have widely disseminated this particular piece of information, which is usual practice, and I would have been immediately in contact with the asset manager.
And are you the appropriate person to ask whether any different action might have been prompted by the receipt of this information?
Partially, I can say that in terms of a serious incident, I'm the Serious Incident Management Team Manager, so what would be most likely outcome with this information is that I would have a discussion with George Graham, the asset manager, confirm that he has seen this particular model, and then suggest that the executive meet to consider what our response would be to this.
And what sort of, you've given evidence that the mine was already on high alert, is that correct?
Well, it was in the state of fire preparedness, so it was already executing a plan in accordance with the document put out by Mr. Shanahan on the Friday.
Are you able to give the board any idea of what, if any, other action would have been, could have been considered by consultation with others?
Certainly, the executive would meet with Mr. Shanahan and a few others down at the mine to look at our current preparedness, given this information, which would seem to suggest that it was imminent that there was going to be a lot more fire activity. We'd review what resources in terms of equipment was available, and we would expect that the emergency command structures would certainly be identified, and we'd take action to make sure that preemptively, we would have an emergency commander and the necessary support in place well before 9 AM on Sunday morning.
They then show you the next page, which is a different document, in the sense that you'll notice a couple of differences, such as it doesn't show the fire as quite extended to the northern batters, but it's an 11 AM document on the Sunday, the 9th.
Correct.
And if you had have received that document, are you able to say whether you would have responded any differently to Mr. Roach's email and what you did?
As I said with the previous one, if Ellen had received this, I would expect it to be widely disseminated. I would certainly discuss with the asset manager what our response to that would be, because it would seem to suggest quite a bit of spotting on the northern side and the western side of the mine, and to review our current preparedness activities.
Okay. Now, I asked you to have a look at this document, please, and two for the board. I think if you, might go to an extra five, which is in paragraph 27. There you referred to emails of a safety blimp on the 7th of February 2014?
Yes.
Or rather, on the, rather, almost prepared on that day.
Correct.
You say the emails consisted of the mine's preparedness plan and a safety blimp for Saturday, the 8th of February and Sunday, the 9th of February circulated. Do you see that?
I do.
Now, an extra fire without taking you with their own includes the one for the safety blimp for Saturday. The document I've handed you, can you tell me what that document is?
I don't have it.
Could it be possibly handed?
Thank you.
Reason excuse, I suppose.
Yes, that's an email from my internal communications manager, safety blimp, Sunday, the 9th of February, total fire bay.
If it's convenient for the board, could that be included as part of the next year five in this witness's statement? Included as part of next year five, it should have been in the first place, in its. Now, at the end of yesterday, you were asked, Dr. Wilson, some questions about paragraph 93 of your affidavit. Do you have it there?
Yes.
And I might ask you, really, if you could, to yourself, paragraphs 92 and 93?
Yes.
Now, what Mr., what Dr. Wilson asked you at page, transcript page 344, was, and at 8 PM you tell us in paragraph 93 that the mine arranged for gravity-fed pipeline from Woyang to be charged. Do you recall saying that in paragraph 93? So yes, that was my bus, was your answer.
Correct.
Now, in paragraph 93, you don't refer to any time. Do you know what time the mines did arrange for the gravity-fed pipeline from Woyang to be charged?
The actual time, I don't know. That would be a matter for the emergency commander.
Okay. And who was the emergency commander at the relative time?
Romeo Preziosi.
Or he's to be called, so he might, might have to take it over. Just for clarity, you do refer to in paragraph approximately 9, at approximately 8 PM, other things occurred. Were you intending to indicate in paragraph 93 that that did happen at approximately 8 PM?
That was not my intent.
Okay. They had questions, Dom, one of the witnesses, his witness.
Thank you, Mr. Harkins. Just a couple of questions before we let you go for the moment. You've been asked a number of questions about the Phoenix map that you saw and some Phoenix maps that you didn't see.
Yes.
And your evidence this morning is that had you seen the maps that you didn't see, your reaction would have been radically different from your reaction to the map that you did see.
Correct.
What are the critical differences between those two maps?
I think that the 1 AM Monday morning, as I understood it, as I was reading it, was suggesting that there was a worst-case scenario, which was the words in the email, that at 1 AM Monday morning, there could be a fire spread towards the northern batters. So it was reasonable in discussion with Ellen Roach to, for him to seek further information on that model. Alternatively, the other two that I have only just seen would suggest that at 9 AM on Sunday morning, there's extensive fire activity around and in the mine. That would cause significant alarm both to Ellen, who would widely distribute it, and to myself.
We'll ask him that. But in terms of your own reaction, when was the first time you saw those, those maps that are annexed to Mr. Jeremiah's statement?
I saw those, I believe, late last night.
In conference with your counsel?
That's correct.
Yes. Now, Mr. Jeremiah's evidence will be that, and he was the incident controller at the time, that those maps that you only saw for the first time last night were in fact provided to the Central Gibson essential industries group, and one would have expected that they would be passed on to Mr. Roach. Have you made any inquiries of Mr. Roach as to whether he in fact received those, that second lot of maps?
I have spoken with Mr. Roach, and he's confirmed that he did not receive those maps.
All right. No further questions, thank you. Mr. Harkins may be excused for the moment.
Thank you.
I call Mr. Preziosi.
Romeo Joseph Preziosi.
Please raise the Bible and repeat after me. I swear by Almighty God.
I swear by Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give.
That the evidence I shall give.
To this board of inquiry.
To this board of inquiry.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing about the truth.
And nothing about the truth.
Good morning, Mr. Preziosi.
Morning.
Could you please start by telling us your full name and your address?
Romeo Joseph Preziosi.
And you're here today in response to a summons?
Correct.
And for that reason, we have no written statement for you to adopt.
That's right.
You're employed at the Hazelwood Mine as a senior mine planner, is that correct?
Correct.
How many years have you been employed at the mine?
Nearly 30 years now.
So back in the SECV days?
Yep.
And can you describe what roles you've performed at the mine during that time?
I started as a mine planner, moved into the production side coordinator, then moved into fire service role as a fire service officer for a number of years, then moved back across to the planning side, where I'm mine planning superintendent, and now I'm senior mine planner.
All right. And the time that you spent as a fire service officer, approximately, how long was that and at what?
About a six-year period.
About six years?
Yeah.
Between what dates?
Around 2005 through to 2010, 2011.
All right. So you were a fire service officer during the time of the December 2005 fire?
Yep.
And the October 2006 fire?
Correct.
And also the fire in 2008?
Yes.
I take it from that that you're familiar with the mine's emergency response plan?
I am.
That we've spent some time looking at over the last couple of days?
Correct.
And you have a nominated role within that plan, do you not?
Correct.
You're an emergency services liaison officer?
That's correct.
And it's the case, isn't it, that there is always an emergency services liaison officer rostered on duty?
That's correct.
And you were rostered on duty, no, you weren't rostered on duty on the Sunday, were you?
No.
That was Mr. Roach was filling that role.
Ellen Roach, yes.
Right. Can you tell the board about your previous experience in implementing the emergency response plan when there was an actual emergency in the mine?
Yeah.
And what roles you've taken?
With the 2006, it's probably a significant fire we had back then. I played probably an assisting role to the emergency commander, more of a logistics side of things in that role for the period of that fire.
All right. And that fire went on for three to four days?
It was a bit longer than that. It was about a week, week or more, about two weeks, actually.
All right. So you were effectively second-in-command to the emergency commander during the 2006 fire?
Assisting, yes.
All right. And in any other actual fires as opposed to exercises, have you taken up a role in that emergency command structure?
Similar roles in 2008, roles in emergency command, arrangement where we've had some protesters on-site as well, where we've run an emergency command building, I've taken on a role there as emergency commander through periods.
All right. And were they protesters outside the gate?
Correct.
Or protesters who'd actually entered into the perimeter of the mine?
No, outside the gate.
All right. So that was in anticipation of an emergency rather than?
Correct. We were running patrols, day and night, basically.
And so that was a planned protest a few years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was on a regular basis, annually.
Mm-hmm.
For a period of time.
And the mine had a full emergency command structure in place?
Correct.
When the protest was expected to happen?
Yep.
Even though nobody?
Leading up to the protest.
Leading up to the protest.
And the actual protest.
So there was a nominated emergency commander on-site, ready to respond?
In that particular case, yes.
Yes. Now, under the emergency response plan in its current form, there are a number of people who are nominated to be emergency commanders.
Correct.
Should an emergency occur.
Yep.
And the most senior of those is Gary Wilkinson, the director of the mine. And then the next person, and the person who will always be on-site, is the mine shift supervisor.
That's right.
So there will always be a mine shift supervisor, although that person will change depending on the shift. And also, Mr. Dugan is nominated as emergency commander.
Yep.
And also Stan Kemmsley, who's a technical compliance manager in the mine. Now, on the 9th of February, Mr. Wilkinson was absent on leave in Queensland, was he not?
Yes.
Mr. Dugan had also just commenced leave.
Correct.
And Mr. Kemmsley was also not on-site that day.
That's right.
So that left the person who would be the emergency commander if anything happened as the mine shift supervisor.
That's right.
Had anyone spoken to you before Sunday, the 9th of February, about whether you would be available to assume the role of emergency commander if needed?
Not in that respect, no.
No. Because your nominated role under the emergency management plan or emergency response plan is Eslo.
Correct.
And there was one already rostered on for the?
That's right.
The 9th, Mr. Roach. Now, you, as I understand it, were not rostered to work on, on the Sunday. Your role as a senior mine planner is a five-day week role, Monday to Friday.
That's right, Monday to Friday.
So you wouldn't normally be at work on a Sunday?
No.
No. But you came into the mine of your own accord at some stage.
That's right.
When was that?
I entered the mine probably around 1:20.
All right. And why did you come in?
Basically, seeing a plume of smoke living in Moor.
Mm-hmm.
Pulled out of the driveway, I was actually headed to Melbourne, saw the smoke, and I got to a point on the west side of Moor where I could see the smoke and the fire getting worse. At that point in time, I just sort of stationed myself there, waiting to see what would occur, knowing that this could have a real impact on our mine.
So this was the Hearns Oak fire at that time?
That's correct, yeah.
And you really had to drive past that to get to Melbourne, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. So you came in just to see if you were needed, was that?
No, I was actually sitting there, watching the fire. I actually turned my radio on in my vehicle, so I was in contact with the guys in the mine as well. So I was monitoring what they were doing on the radio. Actually had discussions on the phone with a couple of those guys, Dean Sewers.
Yes.
Asking what the circumstance was at the moment. I actually got in touch with James Faithfull as well, who's the acting director of mining at the time, and just updating, updating him on the situation at hand.
All right. And he was not in Moorwell at the time, was he?
No, he wasn't.
So did Mr. Faithfull ask you to go to the mine, or did you just decide to do that of your own accord?
No, I decided to do that.
All right. And what were you expecting to do when you arrived?
In the mine? Assist where needed, basically. I notified the guys that I was on-site. I actually entered the site, went to the control center building, and let those guys know that I was actually on-site. At this point in time, we had spotting occurring in the mine.
All right. So just to be clear, you arrived at the mine at about?
It must have been about 1:20, my recollection, yeah.
1:20. All right. So this was just?
I actually spoke to Ellen Roach as well, letting him know that I was on-site, if he needed assistance, I was available.
All right. So he could have backup as an emergency services liaison officer if he needed it?
Yes.
So at the time you arrived, the only fire that was threatening the mine was the Hearns Oak fire?
That's right. No, actually, the Driffield fire had started at that stage.
All right. Well, other evidence suggests that the Driffield fire didn't break out until about half-past 1:20 to 2:00. So, do you have a different understanding of the timeline?
Yeah. I've got some notes.
If they assist, I might ask to look at them.
That's fine. Just trying to get my times right. It was nearly four months ago. So I would have come in, it would have been later than that.
So, as best you recall, by the time you arrived, the Driffield fire was being?
I did know that. I did know that the Driffield fire was occurring. And the reason I knew that was where I was positioned on the west side of Moor. One of the CFA tankers came through, he actually stopped, I knew the guys on the tanker and warned me, one was an ex-mine employee. And he said, "You realise the Driffield fire's just broken out?" And I said, "No, that's not good" at that point in time. That's when I heard of the Driffield. So if the Driffield fire didn't break out till 1:30, yes, obviously I've got my times mixed up.
All right, so you arrived at the mine and you're quite sure that the Driffield fire was already burning by the time you got there? So that might put it closer to 2 o'clock than half past 1:00. Now, when you arrived, you say you reported to some people that you were there. Who did you contact to let them know that you were there and available?
I rang Dean Sewers, phoned him, let him know I was coming in. I went to the control centre, 2B12 operators, I was going to talk to Ian Wilkinson, who was out dealing with spot fires at the time. So I let the control centre attendant know I was on-site and available if required. Basically, that was the initial few people I notified.
And was there anybody in the control centre who had taken charge at that time when you arrived?
At this point in time, we had the control centre attendant there. Ian Wilkinson would have been in charge, but he would have been dealing with the fires out in the field, assessing the fires.
And by this time, there was more than one fire or only one fire?
Yeah, I heard, I actually heard on the radio that it spotted in two areas. And as I got into the mine, it was the third area that was reported, which is on the floor.
And then at some stage, you left the control centre to go out into the mine?
That's right.
What did you do?
I just did a visual, drove through the base of the mine. I could see the northern area where the fire had started in that spot there. I could see a fixed wing plane attempting to put that out. And also, I'm pretty sure there was a chopper that came in as well assisting that. I drove along and as I got to the northern batters, I looked across and I could see the fire spotting in the southern area, southern outlet. As I walked, as I drove further down?
It's a very good quality of that, Mr Preziosi, perhaps you could point out where you were driving?
Yeah, I was driving through, through the middle here. So I could see the northern fire there. And as I got further across to, trying to get the bearings here, across the northern batters and driving up along these ramps, I could see the fire in this area as well, up high.
All right, and you mentioned the fire on the northern batters, approximately where was that?
Oh, it's right there.
Right.
That looks right.
All right, and was there any sign of fire in the working part of the mine?
Not in the working part, but I did also see another spot fire occurring down in this area, which is in the floor, the overburden dump.
All right, so on that tour of inspection that you took, there were at least three separate fires that you saw?
Yeah, by the time I was in there.
Okay, and having done that, what did you then do?
I actually called the 2B12 guys, it might have been Ian Wilkinson at the time. Called them, asked them if they could get a dozer down there on that area, try and smother out the floor at least. Get the guys operating on the stacker, which we have a dump conveyor here in the stacker. I'm in the wrong area, sorry. That's the area there. That's conveyor, dumps the material, overburdening, called. There was spotting down around here, so we had dozers down there with people on those dozers. So I asked them if they could get the dozer out there, start smothering that out.
And do you know if they were able to do that?
They did make attempts to get to it, it's just difficult terrain, it's actually a dump. So it's not easy access to get to that.
Right, so they weren't able to suppress the fire that way, they did?
Yes.
All right. So approximately what time is it now?
It's hard to recall.
Sometime between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock.
Yeah, it happened fairly quickly, it was in 20 minutes.
All right, so did you take any other action while you were out in the mine before you called back to the control centre?
Yeah, I went across to the western batters and I could hear talk over the radio regarding the Driffield, it was getting closer to us.
Yes.
So that was a real concern at that stage?
Yes.
That was posing more of a threat than probably these other fires around here. I did notice on my way around, there was a crew attempting to work on this. There would have been James Manger, I think James talked about that, where he got covered in the dirt. But those guys were working on that area there. We had crews dealing with the fire front coming from the Driffield. So I went and spoke to that and talked to the supervisor, RCL supervisor, which is Dave Bell, regarding some tactics there. They were in the process of cutting them in on earth break. I'd asked them to extend the length of that break and widen the area of that break. We could also see, I could also see down in the riverbed, there's a few bales, hey, large round bales. And with the wind, there were embers flying around, potentially causing spot fires. Asked them to try and push those into the river, try and put them out because they're potentially causing more spot fires in surrounding areas.
So you have three fires burning in, one in the floor of the mine?
At that stage, yeah.
And two, one on the northern, one on the southeastern batters?
Yeah, one on the north.
You have a lot of activity?
One on the floor, one here as well. And also, it was right on our doorstep over there.
Yeah, a lot of activity on the western side of the mine?
Yes.
Trying to prevent the Driffield fire from burning into the working part of the mine.
Correct, yeah.
Now, the resources that you have available to you are two 30,000 litre tankers?
Yes.
Where were they?
I see one on the western, operating near the western flank.
Right, and where was the other one?
And the other one I saw was on the northern batters.
Trying to put out that fire on the northern batters?
Assisting those guys in the northern batters.
And then there are three or four 3,000 smaller tankers?
Yep.
Where were they?
There was probably, from my recollection, there would have been two or three at least on the western flank.
All right, and was there another one elsewhere in the mine?
Not that I can recall. There would have been, but I don't remember seeing it.
All right, and approximately how many people, you know, mine employees and contractors were involved in responding to the various fires and the threat of fire on the western side of the mine?
There would have had to have been potentially a dozen people there, just on the western flank.
All right, and elsewhere in the mine?
It's hard to put a figure on. Just from my observations, it would have been four or five guys on the northern batters, maybe more.
Now, before you received a call from Mr Roach to come back to the control centre, was there anywhere else you went, anything else you did?
Yeah, I left, I talked to the guys down the western flank, so they seemed to be controlling that fairly well. So I then looked at strategising and maybe coming back to the north and putting some wet breaks on water barriers in the northern batters to prevent it from spreading further. I thought that they were west, that direction? So that's where I met up with Dave Shanahan, and Dave had the same idea, which is good. So we basically worked, I was working one level, he was working a level below me. So what we were doing was not just turning on sprays, we were actually pulling the, what we call skippers, the monitors that spin around, taking them off the actual hydrant connection and just shooting the water straight up in the air, which again creates a wall, just a huge wall of water, which dampens somewhere.
And that was a strategy designed to prevent the fire from spreading further?
It's trying to contain, it's all about containment, yeah.
Was there anything that you attempted to do to put the fire that was already burning to the east of you, on the northern batters, out?
No, that's about all I've got time to do.
All right, and then you were called back?
And I got a call.
Okay.
From Alan.
So you left Mr Shanahan there and went back to the control centre?
I got the call from Alan and from that call, I told him I'd be at least 20 minutes, half an hour before I got there, that if he could open it up and get the emergency command centre established and all doors open and things operating the way they should be.
Now, what actually is the emergency command centre?
It's basically a control point where all the information is coming into the emergency control centre. And we have dedicated rooms where we have whiteboards, screens, computers with all the information coming in, all the calls are coming in. We have dedicated phone lines, radio room, breakout room. We have provision for assembly areas for CFA vehicles, all that sort of... So that's a whole building totally dedicated to emergency response.
And when you say all the information is coming in?
Yep.
How? What kind of information?
So would you clear the emergency?
Yes.
So in the process, I take the lead role as commander and as I'm heading across, I'm notifying people with emergencies being declared, all your correspondents to come through us, through the command centre.
All right, so radio communication?
Mainly radio and mobile phone as well.
Now, you have a trunk radio system?
We have a trunk radio system.
Which is point-to-point rather than an open channel, is that right?
Yep.
Is there any open channel communication, radio communication available?
Yes.
But that's not in every vehicle, as I understand it?
Most vehicles, not, yes, not in every vehicle, correct.
So what communications strategy is in place at the commencement of an emergency? How do you make sure that everybody knows what's going on?
Yeah, we, for this particular day, we got a heap of radios in from our time of protection, from memory. We issue it out to all the crews. So they've got communication via radio to all the crews. This is all evolving, you've got to understand. So as we start to set up our strategies and plans, now that crews are directed to certain areas, they then get handed their radios and communication lines.
All right. So, but this is well after 3 o'clock by the time you're handing out radios to crews?
Probably within an hour or two.
Now, the emergency response plan spells out the role and responsibilities that an emergency commander has to follow. Had you actually performed that role yourself before?
Yep, I have.
In an actual emergency as opposed to an exercise?
When you say actual emergency, well, I was in that role when we had protesters.
When the protesters, but that was really in anticipation of a protester getting over the fence, wasn't it?
It was an actual role, it wasn't, it wasn't an exercise, it was an actual...
It's fair to say in that instance, you had a bit more time to get yourself organised, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, one of the responsibilities under the emergency response plan is for the control centre attendant to call triple zero to notify the CFA of a fire.
That's right.
Do you know whether, before you assumed the role of emergency commander, the control centre attendant had done that?
No, I wasn't aware of that.
Did you check whether that had been done?
No, the assumption I made was that we had planes coming in and choppers coming in. So the CFA knew the situation we're in.
So because you'd seen the planes and the choppers over on the northern side of the mine, you didn't think that it was necessary to call triple zero?
Well, they're being redirected to assist us, so the assumption is that they know that we have a fire in the mine.
All right, so once you got back to the emergency command centre, which Mr Roach had set up while you were driving back across the mine?
Yep.
What did you then do?
Put my tabard on.
Sorry?
Put my tabard on.
Yes, well, that's the first step in assuming command after that?
And I handed Alan Roach his.
Yes.
And then we proceeded to set up the building accordingly. Whiteboards, pulled out plans, drawings, try and get some idea of the scale of this and where it was going. This is still growing.
Yes, so you already knew that you had a fire threatening on the western side of the mine and you had at least three separate fires burning within the mine?
Yes.
And limited resources to deal with those four things?
Yep.
So how did you set about forming a strategy?
We started setting our priorities for asset protection, particularly substations, power poles, those areas there, and the coal conveyors and the dredgers. So it's hard to recall exactly the details behind it. There's a lot of phone calls and a lot of communication over radios during this period, the first few hours. But basically 2B12 look after the operational side of things in terms of wetting the areas down and we can focus, the other guys can focus on trying to prevent the fires from escalating any further.
Okay, and that was the 1 by 7 crew?
Yeah.
And some people from RCL?
RCL as well, yes.
So in addition to the 2 by 12 crew who were dealing with wetting down the operating area?
Yep.
How many people did you have at your disposal?
Sorry, repeat that question.
In addition to the 2 by 12 crew who you say were all working on the operating area, how many extra people did you have at your disposal?
It would have been a dozen or so people, yeah.
And what decisions did you make about where to put your resources?
The western, the Driffield fire was a real concern because that was really coming on really quick and it was heading straight for our main operational area. So we maintained people there in that area monitoring. And we were getting spot fires in the vicinity coming over the river in certain areas. So the guys were doing what they were required to do there, keep it at bay. Some of the other things was we started calling in maintenance people to establish, we have these crane monitors with booster pumps, so people who can operate the cranes. And what the crane monitors do, the attachment goes on the end of the cranes. Obviously, the crane's got the lift, the height, to attack these high coal faces.
So a monitor is like a spray?
Yeah, it's a monitor with remote control, it can be directional. And start setting those up for containment, more so containment.
All right, and where did you put those, once you had them?
I believe the crane monitor went down towards the southern batters, in memory.
So you just had the one of those?
We had two.
Two?
So we assembled two, and I think one of them actually broke down. Had some repairs, hydraulic repairs required to it.
Okay, so it's one that you could use?
Yeah.
And you directed that down to the southern batters?
I'm pretty sure it was down there, yeah.
And was it a containment strategy? Were you just trying to stop it from spreading at that stage?
Yeah, stop it spreading, yes, true. We also, through Alan Roach and through his contact through Central Gibbsland, Central Issues Group, or the ICC, he had to contact there, we were trying to get additional aerial support for us because the fire looked like it was starting to get around the corner. Okay, the fire started spreading and getting around this corner here. I'm really concerned, it was moving along. 2 by 12 guys were directed to make sure all the water can fully wet this area down. And we tried to get some aerial bombing in this area here to try and hold back from getting any further. And luckily, it didn't get any further than the maintenance container about there.
All right, and Mr Roach was communicating with the ICC, was he?
Yes.
The Terrelegan ICC?
Yes.
All right, well, we'll ask him about those conversations.
Yeah, sure.
Were you, did you have any information from the ICC about the relative threat posed by the Hurns Oak fire to the north and the Driffield fire to the south?
Not on that day, no.
No. So you had no input from the ICC about which of those fires you should be more concerned about?
No.
Now, while you were in the role of emergency commander, did you have any issues with water supply?
Yes.
Yes, and what were they?
Loss of power to pump stations.
All right, so can you explain what happened and what effect that had on your attempts to fight the fires?
We have two major pump stations?
Yes.
One we call our dirty water pump station, which is here. And the other one, which is our coin water pump station, here. is our clean water pump station, here, that's clean water, it's predominantly our artisan water, generally that water's used for, it's clean water, so it can use for firefighting, and generally gets pumped out into the Hazelwood Pondage for de-watering, so we lost power supply to both of these pump stations.
All right, and the power supplies from?
From the northern batters.
High voltage lines that come over the northern batters?
That's correct.
And there are in fact two of them running parallel?
I believe so, yeah.
And they're, it's mains power from the external grid?
That's right.
Although you generate power, you're not self-sufficient?
Yeah, it's from a SPON.
Okay, now, was there any backup power supply arrangement that you could switch
We do have contingency, that's where our, I mean, that's where our technical experts
to?
come into play, when we had electrical engineers on in that day, dealing with those issues.
All right, but we heard from Mr. Harkins yesterday that that tooks hours and hours to sort out in very difficult conditions.
Yes, reinstating supply, power supply, yeah, it was extremely difficult, considering the circumstances.
Are there no internal generators that can be switched to, to power the pumps?
No.
No. There was also a question that arose about gravity-fed water from Loyang, can you explain what that was about?
What happens if, we still have the additional pump stations located on the edge of the pondage, and I don't think it's on there.
No, the pondage is to the south of the...
They call it Pump House fifty and fifty-three, so they, they draw water out of the Hazelwood Pondage, and that water gets delivered to two tanks, we have on the ridge line, high on the ridge, next to the power station, and they supply a gravity feed for us, so even though we lost that pumps, those pump stations for a period of time, we still had water coming into the mine through those additional pump stations, located in the pondage.
Okay, and was that sufficient to continue your firefighting efforts, or was it a lower supply of water?
It's sufficient to continue the firefighting, but it does reduce the pressure.
Right, so I'm, so you had lower pressure throughout the entire fire services system? While the power was off, you were just relying on that gravity-fed water?
Listen, I really can't answer that, I'm not sure.
Now, there was also evidence from Mr. Major, I think it was yesterday, that at about six o'clock, he and the man he was working with received a call to return out of the mine, that there'd been a call made to evacuate the mine, did you make that decision?
I don't recall that.
No, so that's not, not a...
I don't recall ever doing that or hearing that.
So, did you, well, you were the emergency commander?
Correct.
At about six o'clock still, were you not?
Yes.
Did you make a call to evacuate the mine?
No.
So we don't know where Mr. Major got that from, it certainly wasn't from there. The power was off at that time, was it not?
I think we lost power, yeah, around about six.
All right, and it was still daylight, so could still see?
Yeah, daylight savings, so it was still operate.
Now, Mr. Faithfull, the acting mine director, in Mr. Wilkinson's absence, arrived at the mine about five o'clock, we'd been told by Mr. Harkins.
Yeah, sounds about right, yes.
When he arrived, did he work with you in the emergency command centre?
Yes, closely working with me.
And at some point, you handed over the role of emergency commander to him. Can you describe how that transition took place?
So basically, he came in, so briefed him on what was being happening, and he sort of just explained the situation at hand, and mind you, this is still developing, this fire, so things are still changing even while he's there, so we're still making decisions on, on a lot of things that are occurring at the time. Around about eight o'clock, I think that's when we did the official handover, so basically, we brought the guys in, the guys out in the field, the guys doing the, like the leaders out in the field, just to get an update on their situation, and then strategised for that night, moving into that night, so we also had people called in, additional people, to give the current people obviously a rest, we knew this was going to be, we're in for a long haul here, so we started a roster system, so we're calling in appropriate people, so at the brief, these people, the people that are on the job at the day, give us an update, the situation, then we strategised, basically, how we move forward for that following night, and the people coming in know what their priorities will be for that night.
Right, and at some stage, the CFA also arrived at the mine, when were you first aware of a CFA presence?
We had a strike team coming, and I'm not sure the timing on this, I don't recall the time, it'd have to be around about five or six, I'm just estimating, they came in, I talked, he came directly to me, it was a strike team leader, and he had, I think, four CFA tankers with him, he received a phone call at that point in time, he came back to me and said, listen, there's, there's property and life endangered at Driffield, we're going to have to go, being ready, so that was the extent of that.
All right, so they arrived, reported to you, and were called away before they actually got into the mine, and this was at around about five or six o'clock, as best you can recall?
Yeah, it's hard to say, unless, yeah, there's a lot happening.
All right, and then after that, when was the next time you were aware of CFA presence?
We had CFA presence on our northern batters, assisting with the protection of MWN substation, so I believe there's a couple of tankers there, assisting us, and we had our own fire crew there as well, protecting that substation.
So there'd be evidence later today about a strike team that was initially directed to the briquet factory?
Yeah.
And found no fire at the briquet factory, but could see the fire in the mine?
Yeah.
And spent some considerable time trying to gain entrance to the mine through?
The slide gate?
Well, there were two gates that they went through, attempted to get through.
Well, our gate?
Were you aware that there was a strike team on the north-eastern side of the mine trying to get access?
No.
No?
I do know, though, as the fire broke through, our eastern batter, and went through the energy bricks area, it actually took the power off our slide gate, so the gate was locked open, so there was plenty of access.
And can you point out where the slide gate is?
Very good, yeah.
All right, and what are the other access points around there?
Energy bricks, we recently called from Moyang, the B double trucks, so they actually run, they run down here, down through here. Roughly there, then, that's where they're done, there's a swing gate here, which I don't believe is out, I think it belongs in each brick. The other access is obviously the power station, the main access, and along the perimeter we have fences and gates, each way along there, Dave, show hand, it's actually open.
Open that one.
Yeah, down towards Drilling Depot Road.
Now, Mr. Faithfull took over from you as emergency commander at about eight o'clock, and at that point, you were released to return home?
Oh, I was there until about twelve, I think.
You were there until about twelve. Were you involved in the formal handover to the CFA?
I don't remember a formal handover, for that particular night.
Now, I had asked you about your awareness of CFA presence, there was a strike team that came and went, there was?
I knew there were tankers on our northern batters assisting us.
The tankers you were aware of on the northern batters?
Yep.
When were you aware of a CFA presence in the emergency command centre?
Would have been that night, and Ross, Ross Mayo came in with a strike team, and I think I've got here on my notes, there was six fire tankers who came in with.
And that was at approximately what time?
Oh, gee, would have been around about seven or eight o'clock time.
I've no further questions for you at this point, but I would like to have a look at your notes.
Sure.
No, no questions before, please. Couple of matters, we, you said you were concentrating on assets, in terms of strategy, did you have any view about what the effect of the fire would be if it got into the operating area, what effect the operating area would have on the intensity of the fire?
Yeah, it just escalated even further, made it even more difficult.
You also asked some questions about the power supply, you said that the duplicated power supply which fed substation MWN had been stopped because of damage by the fire above the northern, northern batters, is that correct?
That's how I recall it, yes.
And the alternative power supply was available to MWE, was it not, which is in the east portion?
That's right.
Could you indicate where the substation MWE is in the map?
Yep, MWE is roughly there.
And so the damage to the, that took out MWN?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I want to make sure I get it right.
Take your time.
My own plan, I shouldn't have this plan, I should have just read it sideways, yes, that area, that's MWE, east.
The board, E indicates east, not surprising, the N indicates north, along the lateral edge. The damage that was, that took out the supply to MWN did not affect MWE, is that correct?
I don't believe so, I mean, you have to ask the technical guys.
Well, do you know that the problem with MWE was that it fed an area which was damaged incidentally by fire in the eastern path?
Yes.
That caused it to have shorts or surges?
Correct.
And the electricians were able to repair that, were they not, before they repaired the supply to MWN in the north?
I believe so, yes.
And they did that by isolating the part of MWE which supplied the burnt-out installation?
Yes.
Were you able to assist the board by indicating how long was that we're out of power altogether?
We managed to restore power to one of the pumps, which was crucial.
To MWE or MW?
MW.
Or MHO?
It might have been MHO, this is where you need to, I'm not quite exactly sure, but it was, it was the early mornings, we managed to get water back, power back to one of those pumps, which restored our water.
MH, by early morning, what time you think you were, you weren't there?
No, I wasn't there, but I believe it was around two, three in the morning.
While you are there, do you know where MHO is?
Yeah, yes.
Could you indicate that?
Ah, MHO, yeah, that's a tricky one.
We'll take, we'll take it up with you, is that any better to assist you?
Northern substation, that we used during the westfield transfer operations.
And you know something but not much about the fact that electricians were able to provide?
Yeah.
Activate that to provide a?
They did a fantastic job.
Alternative source of electricity?
Correct, yeah.
You don't recall what time that occurred?
No, I wasn't there at that time, it was early hours that morning.
The only other thing I wanted to ask you was about the, the access on the eastern side, from the eastern side, is the slide gate the only means of access?
Yeah, predominantly, yes.
And you said that your understanding was that was locked open by a raging fire, is that correct?
That's right.
Do you know whether that got locked open before or after the CFA, the strike team arrived and then got diverted?
I do not know that.
It was sometime while you were still with the correct? Go through the questions.
Mr. Presios, so be excused?
Yes, thank you.
Just before he does...
No, sorry, I do beg your pardon.
With this new map here, could you just point out the points of access into the mine?
Okay, we have your main access through the power station.
And that would be where CFA could gain entry, so could you just point out to us which points that would be?
Try this, this map.
Are you familiar with this map?
Yeah, I look at these maps every day, I don't know what's going on, but, power station's in this area here, so that's the main off Broderie Road, that's the main access to the station at the mine, and also the sliding gate, which is located on the north side, which is what we call the sliding gate, is in there, roughly, that area there.
And Mr. Presios, so there's an entrance off Miners Way, is that the one that you were just pointing to?
Yeah, that's the other one.
That's the other one?
That's not over there, I saw, I believe.
Can you get into the mine through that gate? And where's that, Mr. Presios?
Potentially, I think, sorry, it's a gate outside our existing space.
So while it's not precisely accurate, the gates?
Gates are, where the red squares are, on the eastern side and the northern side, that's roughly where the gates are.
Roughly where the gates are, the main entry to Hazelwood Gate.
It's distinct, and there's also the one right near the power station.
Yeah, I believe that that gate, though, is actually, that's Energy Bricks' property.
Well, ultimately, just to ask one more on that, on that topic, somebody wanted to gain entry to the mine on that day, is there any reason why they wouldn't be able to go through the main gate?
No, there isn't.
The main gate wasn't locked down on that day?
No.
The main gate is the gate, if I recall it correctly, which has got a, a taboo gate?
It's a main gate, it's a main gate, by diamond, if I'm correct.
Thank you for the last time, Mr. Presios.
Thank you.
Now, the next witness is James Faithfull, if he could come to the stand place.
Please state your full name.
James Anthony Faithfull.
Please read the Bible and repeat after me. I swear by Almighty God.
I swear by Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give.
That the evidence that I shall give.
To this board of inquiry.
To this board of inquiry.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Good morning, Mr. Faithfull.
Morning.
Let's start by asking you your full name and your address.
James Anthony Faithfull.
And what's your occupation?
Technical Services Manager.
And you're here today in... And you're here today in response to a summons?
I am.
And so we have no written statement from you?
No.
Um, in the week commencing the 10th of February this year, you were going to be the acting mine director, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, and that is because Gary Wilkinson was on leave?
That's right.
That week. Um, now, your substantive role is technical services?
Manager.
Manager?
Correct.
What does that involve?
So I look after the mine survey, mine geotechnics, uh, mine geology, mine planning, I serve the top of Romeo Presiosa, um, all of those activities. It's all of the technical activities that go along with operating a mine.
Uh, how many years have you worked at the mine?
Uh, well, fifteen months.
Fifteen months, um, and what's your background before that?
Spent fifteen years as a, working through a number of different roles within mining industry throughout Australia. Through Rio Tinto, VHP, a number of different other sites, including Royang, and have spent the last fifteen months working as the Technical Services Manager at Hazelwood.
All right, so in the fifteen months that you have worked at Hazelwood, um, this fire on the 9th of February was the only fire that you had experience of, only significant fire?
Yes.
Um, you've just missed out on the one in December, or January 2012?
Yes.
Uh, what's your familiarity with the mine's emergency response plan?
Uh, it's reasonably good.
All right.
I've certainly read the document.
Um, have you had any previous experience in putting the plan into action?
Not in putting our plan into action, but certainly in putting other plans on other sites into action, but not at Hazelwood.
No, um, and I take it that you hadn't participated in any of the training exercises that had been done with the local CFA?
No.
No?
Only personal firefighting techniques that we'll go through when we enlist on site.
Yes, so you're a fairly recent recruit to Hazelwood, what training did you go through?
Uh, so we go through, all Hazelwood employees and indeed their contractors go through a, um, like an assessment, a fire assessment. When you have a classroom assessment, then you have practical assessment, actual firefighting.
Now, the emergency response plan that, that we've been looking at has a number of nominated emergency commanders.
That's right.
Um, now, the most senior of those in the mine's management structure is Gary Wilkinson, the Director of the Mine, and you were acting in his role, in his absence, were you not?
Yes.
So that puts you as the most senior, um, emergency commander in the, um, in the emergency response plan in the event of an emergency that week.
Yes.
Now, in your role, uh, you usually work a five-day week, is that correct?
Yes.
You're not on shift?
No.
Um, and that's a Monday to Friday, five-day week? On the Friday the 7th, you hadn't started to act as the mine director at that point, Mr. Wilkinson was still there. Um, there was an outbreak of fire at Hearn's Oak that afternoon, uh, to the northwest of the mine. Were you aware of that that afternoon?
Yes.
Did you discuss that with Mr. Wilkinson?
I can't recall.
Um, did you discuss it with anyone within the mine?
Yes, I certainly spoke to, indeed Romeo, Stan Kingsley, Dean Silver, Steve Harkins and indeed George Graham about it.
All right, so there was fairly widespread knowledge, um, of the, the fire on the northwestern side of the mine. Uh, did you look for any external source of information about that fire?
Not personally, no.
No. Now, on the Friday the 7th, before you left work for the week, were you also aware that the CFA Chief Officer had declared a total fire ban for both the Saturday and the Sunday of the weekend?
I can't recall with clarity.
Maybe, maybe not.
Maybe, maybe not.
Uh, were you aware that it was going to be a very hot weekend?
I certainly know that the mine had put in place the fire prevention plans.
Okay, uh, were you aware that the fire agencies were communicating to people that Sunday would be the worst day since Black Saturday?
No.
No. So you saw the fire preparedness plan that Dave Shanahan, um, had prepared?
Yes.
He communicated that to you and, and everyone else who needed to know?
Okay, sitting up, yes.
Um, so you knew by the time you left the mine that there was a fire burning to the northwest of the mine. Um, you may not have known that a total fire ban had been declared, but you knew that the mine had, um, moved to a state of preparedness?
Yes.
Uh, and you knew that the forecast for the weekend was very hot?
Yes.
Did you consider whether there were any additional arrangements that you should put in place, um, to ensure that the mine was fully prepared to respond to a fire if it should threaten the mine?
I considered that if, uh, so given, given the Hearn's Oak fire, at that stage when I spoke to, uh, George Graham and indeed, uh, Steve Harkins and Romeo Presiosa later that afternoon, it had been, uh, the physical fire at Hearn's Oak turned away from the mine, so it left us, uh, we were in a better position than had it been heading towards us, so no, we hadn't had done any additional preparatory works at that stage, apart from speaking to the likes of Stan Kingsley and Romeo and indeed Dean, previous, uh, when they were sitting up there for our prevention plans for the weekend, to ensure that they had some additional resources in case things broke out.
Okay, uh, you weren't planning to come into work on the Sunday when you left on the Friday afternoon?
Correct.
During the course of Saturday, did you receive any updates from Alan Roach, who was the rostered emergency services liaison officer?
No.
Uh, did he share with you a fire prediction map that he'd received from the Central Gibbsland, uh, Essential Industries Group? Um, did you have any other information about the status of the Hearn's Oak fire, um, by Saturday afternoon?
No.
Did you look it up on the CFA website or the Fire Ready Act?
Look, I vaguely remember, uh, looking at the, uh, I think it might have been the Groves website, where they mentioned that it was contained.
All right, um, did you look at the weather forecast for the following day?
I can't recall looking at the weather forecast for the following day.
At any stage on the Saturday afternoon or evening, did you think that it might be best for you to go into the mine on the Saturday morning, uh, on, on the Sunday morning? In case fire threatened the mine?
No.
No. You've seen, I take it, the, um, prediction map, the fire prediction map that Mr. Roach, um, provided to Mr. Harkins on the afternoon of, uh, Saturday the 8th? Um, that would have been useful information for you to have, would it not?
It would be useful information.
Yes.
I'd be, um, quizzing it, of course, if it came to me by the way, I'd want to substantiate the information that was given. Proven to be, um, proven to be of standing importance, and yes, it would be.
Uh, it, it would have alerted you to, uh, the very real risk that the mine would be threatened by fire on Sunday.
That information?
Yes. Yes, and you might then have made some further inquiries about the significance of the map and what the weather forecast was for Sunday.
Yes.
So I take it no one contacted you on Saturday afternoon or evening and said, James, you really better be at work tomorrow?
No.
No. Where were you on the morning of Sunday the 9th?
Envelok.
Uh, and when were you alerted to the situation at the mine, that it was being threatened by not one but two fires?
Romeo called me at, uh, I look at somewhere between half one and two.
Uh, and what did he tell you?
Uh, he said that, uh, got fire approaching, um, the Hearn's Oak had gotten out, I think at that stage, uh, and that we had to refill there in the background as well.
And what did you do at that time?
Made my way over to, um, the mine.
All right, so you're at Envelok, um, there were roadblocks in place, were there not?
Several.
Uh, on the Princess Highway because of the Hearn's Oak fire?
Yes.
Is that the way you came back?
Yes, yes.
Um, and it took you longer than you had anticipated to, to get back to the mine?
Much longer.
Uh, what time did you eventually arrive?
Approximately five o'clock.
All right, and when you arrived, what, now, can you describe the situation that you found? Where did you go first and?
First thing I did was went to the, um, the mine lookout, which is on the southern batters. Do I need to point that out?
I think we know where that is.
Know where it is. Um, I went there straight away so I could get a visual appreciation of what we're facing. And saw the fire indeed at Drift Hill, uh, the fire at Hearn's Oak and a number of fires within the mine.
Uh, and after you'd taken that, um, visual stocktake, where did you go then?
Uh, went back to the, the emergency control center.
And what situation did you find there?
Uh, very busy, very busy, a lot of activity.
Who was in, in charge at that stage?
Romeo was in charge at that stage.
Uh, and did he brief you about the situation?
He did.
Uh, and can you outline what that briefing was?
Oh, look, it's, it's very sketchy at best, but we had a number of fires at that stage within the mine. Um, we had obviously the Drift Hill fire and the, the fire, uh, at Hearn's Oak. We had some water problems at that stage and, uh, that's the best that I can sort of recall.
All right, uh, now, at some point in that evening, you took over from?
That's right.
Mr. Presiosa as the emergency commander, uh, at what time did you assume that role?
Oh, it would have been eight, eight thirty, something like that.
Okay, um, and the situation when you assumed that role was, was what? What did you have to contend with?
Uh, well, for starters, we had no power at that stage. Um, we're sitting in the mine admin offices, uh, in the dark with a couple of lighting plants outside, shedding light on where we were. Um, we had, uh, at that stage, I think that we, well, we had a very limited water within the mine. There was indeed no pressure. Uh, we'd lost at that stage, uh, the clean water pump station, the dirty water pump station. And indeed, we were starting to shut down units and stations, shut down supply because we physically couldn't get coal.
All right, so the loss of power to the mine not only affected the water supply for fighting fires, but also affected coal production?
Yes.
Couldn't run the conveyors, couldn't run the dredge?
That's right.
Is it fair to say that, that during that evening, your focus was very much on getting the power back on rather than fighting the fires?
It is fair to say.
Um, when you arrived at about five, five thirty, was there any CFA presence that you were aware of?
I can't recall.
When did you first become aware that the CFA were there on site?
Oh, Ross at the handover, I think he was at the handover at about eight, Ross Mayo.
All right, and is that the point at which, um, he wrote out an incident action plan?
No, no, that was done long, uh, later in the night, in the morning.
That was?
Yeah, that was, uh, I guess an update for the day shift crews coming on.
All right, so that, that was at the end of, of that night, ready for the, um, the people who were taking over on this, on the Monday morning?
Yes.
So during that period between about, between when you assumed as emergency, assumed the role of emergency commander and when the CFA took over, what decisions were you making about where to put resources?
The primary decision was to put resources where they're not going to be injured or anything else. So we were, the focus was on, at that stage, um, the Drift Hill fire was presenting a, a serious threat. We all obviously had to.
Still at that time of the evening?
Yes. Because of the, uh, proximity of the operational places, so we.
So is your evidence that the Drift Hill fire was still advancing, was still regarded as a threat at about by eight o'clock at night?
From my recollection, yes, it was.
All right, so you were, had some resources on that side of the mine?
We had some patrols that were set up to patrol and make sure that that fire was kept away from the mine.
All right, and?
And indeed, the two by twelve guys, um, with, with no power were indeed patrolling the operational bridges to ensure that no spot fires arrived in the mine.
And by the time you arrived there, were fires burning on the northern batters, on the southeastern batters, and possibly also on the floor of the mine?
Yes.
Um, did you do anything to try to suppress or contain those fires during the time you were responsible?
Uh, yes, we did. We, I, I mean, as Romeo mentioned, we, we brought in additional belvane resources with the, with the crane monitors to assist. Uh, we had the, the RTL tankers that were running around trying to, uh, get to the fires where they could. We indeed had, had our own guys going around and turning on and off sprays and trying to get hoses, uh, to where we, uh, to where we needed them.
But by the time you arrived, the power was off and there was no water, was there?
Well, sorry, when I say no water, I mean limited water, because the dirty water pump station is used to pressurize the water system. So if you lose the dirty water pump station?
You'd better, you'd better go back and explain that.
Okay.
Um, because I understood your evidence to be that by the time you arrived, there was, there was no water?
No.
Because the power was off?
When, when we say, when I say no water, I mean pressurized water, okay? We had, we still had water coming in from pump house fifty and fifty-three into CMD tanks. That gives us some water, but it doesn't give us.
Where is CMD tanks?
Uh, they sit up at the top of the, uh... So they give us, uh, they give us some capacity, but it's gravity fed capacity.
All right, so tankers could refill from those tanks, is that the case?
No, no, but there's a, there's a number of fill points, and indeed freshwater fill points throughout the site that they can refill from.
Even with no pressure in the fire services system?
I believe on the northern batters, there's a, there's a mains freshwater refill point.
All right, from town water effectively? All right, on, on the northern batters? Uh, so that was still operating, that was still available?
I believe so.
Um, but the fire services pipe system was depressurized until the power came back on?
Yes.
Yes, um, so in what way could the water from those two tanks that you identified be used to suppress the fire?
Uh, you'd have limited capabilities to suppress the fire.
But it wasn't possible by the time you arrived on site to turn any sprays on, was it?
Sorry, can you?
Well, the, the sprays are connected to the fire services pipe network. That was depressurized because the power had been lost.
That's what I'm saying, you do have some capabilities, so rather than having a full-blown spray, you're, you're getting a limited capability.
So a trickle?
Yeah, a trickle.
A trickle, so, uh, and, and where were you trickling the water that was available?
Uh, s- some of the water was being distributed on the operational faces and some of the water was being distributed on the, if, areas that were affected by the fire. So we're doing what we could and what we had.
All right. Excuse me. All right, I've no further questions, do members of the board have any questions?
None from, uh, that, that, thank you. Just the one question, can you, you know, maybe, uh, the witness could be shown Mr. Harkins', uh, statement, in particular, uh, the modeling? If you recall, Miss Richards asked you a question about this modeling?
Yes.
Good seeing you. When did you first see this modeling?
Uh, in the last couple of days.
And what have you been told about the information that went with the modeling?
Apart from what I learned yesterday, not much.
If you were told that this modeling, sorry, throw that, you observed that the modeling shows that, uh, the, uh, fire from Hearn's Oak that breaks containment would reach the northern batters of the mine? Is that what you would take from looking at that modeling?
Yes.
If you were told that that represented the worst-case scenario that could occur by? If you were told that that represented the worst case scenario that could occur by one AM on Monday morning, and you were told that on Saturday evening, would that have changed any of your action between Saturday evening and Sunday morning?
No.
No further questions?
Can I just clarify the position in relation to your knowledge of modelling of this kind? Have you had any training in it so that if it was made available to you, you would understand, at least in some degree or to a substantial degree, the significance of such a model if it were made available to you?
I haven't had any training in this modelling, it would be the first time I'd be reviewing it.
So even things like the Phoenix modelling, that what came out in relation to the Black Saturday would not have been known to you and you would not have had other occasion to have had training so that it would be meaningful to you?
Uh, no, but I would, I would visually look at that and I would see that there is something that's going to be happening to our northern batters.
So you, you, in effect, you might draw some inferences
Yes.
From it without being able to understand it fully, you'd have a, a general idea
Yes.
Of what its meaning was likely to be?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions arising?
Just to, to continue on that, that train, Mr. Faithfull, if you had seen this on Saturday afternoon, you would have appreciated that it suggests a fairly grave situation for the mine in the course of Sunday?
Given that it's a worst case scenario, on it at one o'clock the following day, no, I wouldn't have done anything else additional on Saturday night.
You wouldn't have seen any need to raise the level of preparedness at the mine in the course of Sunday?
Given that it's a worst case scenario, and it's ten, it's one o'clock the following, uh, Monday morning, I wouldn't have done anything different.
Uh, did you?
Knowing that we had fire prevention plans on site and we had additional resources available then.
So i- if you had seen this, you would have been satisfied that the fire prevention, uh, plans in place were adequate?
Yes.
You wouldn't have thought there was any need to have an emergency commander on site in case?
No.
No? And you wouldn't have, uh,
Because it's information from, for the tenth.
Well, for one o'clock in the morning on the tenth, it's not good. You wouldn't have contacted Mr. Roach and asked him for an explanation and asked him for, uh, what other scenarios might be available?
Uh, no.
No, you would have been satisfied on the basis of that, that you had everything in place that you needed to have?
At that stage, yes.
Thank you. No further questions, may Mr. Faithfull be excused?
Thank you.
The next witness is, uh, Robert Dugan. If Mr. Dugan could please come forward.
Please state your full name.
Robert Ronald Dugan.
Please raise the Bible and repeat after me. I swear by Almighty God
I swear by Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give
That the evidence I shall give
To this board of inquiry
To this board of inquiry
Will be the truth
Will be the truth
The whole truth
The whole truth
And nothing but the truth
And nothing but the truth.
Good morning, Mr. Dugan.
Good morning.
Can you please state your full name and your address?
Robert Ronald Dugan.
Uh, and you are employed there at Brodrick Road, uh, in Morewell, um, at the Hazelwood Mine as the mine production manager?
That's correct.
And how long have you held that position?
Um, since, that exact position from, um, the middle of two thousand thirteen.
Uh, now, I'll ask you a few more questions about your, um, background at the mine, but before I do that, you've made a, a statement to the inquiry?
That's correct.
Uh, you have a copy of it there in front of you. Uh, it's a statement of ninety-five paragraphs.
That's correct.
And a number of attachments, eighteen attachments?
Yep.
Um, you're familiar with that statement, I take it?
Very much.
Uh, are there any corrections that you want to make at this point?
No.
Is the statement true and correct?
Yes, it is.
I tend to that if I might. You're a surveyor by training, by trade?
That's correct.
Uh, and you worked as a surveyor in, um, open cut mines in the Latrobe Valley for a number of years, up to nineteen ninety-three?
That's correct, yes, started in nineteen seventy-seven.
Uh, and then you, um, had some time, um, out, out of the mining industry?
Uh, yes, correct, but, uh, I was in private practice, but we were back into the, we were surveying in the mining industry.
So, so you, you moved into private practice, but you were servicing the mining industry during that period? And then, uh, you returned to Hazelwood in, uh, two thousand and one?
That's correct.
Uh, and I see that you've been an emergency services liaison officer since two thousand and four?
That's correct.
And that's a role that you still fill?
No, that's not correct.
No.
I, um, once I took on the position as, um, production manager, I already linked with that role.
All right. Uh, and what other positions apart from your current role have you held within the mine?
Yes, uh, if I could just go through the chronological order, um, uh, from two thousand and one to two thousand and seven, I was the, uh, senior surveyor. Uh, from, uh, two thousand and seven to September two thousand and ten, I was the mine operations coordinator. Uh, from September two thousand and ten, I was, um, I was from, sorry, from that date, uh, until April two thousand and twelve, I was the mine production superintendent. In two thousand and twelve, um, April two thousand and twelve until December two thousand and twelve, I was deputy production manager. I was appointed acting production manager, a role which I performed, uh, previously from time to time in that period. And in June two thousand and thirteen, I was appointed production manager.
All right, so if we can have a look at the, um, organisation chart that's at attachment one to Mr. Dugan's statement. It's just behind that first tab there. Um, so you, uh, your role is the yellow level?
That's correct.
Uh, you report to Gary Wilkinson, the mine director?
Yes.
Uh, and you essentially sit, um, or are responsible for the production side in the mine?
That's correct.
Uh, and Mr. Shanahan, who we heard from yesterday, reports to you?
That's correct.
In your statement, there's a, a section on the second page that is headed mine fires. And you give us a bit of an explanation of, uh, the volatility of brown coal and how very well it burns. Um, you say at paragraph fourteen that you're not aware in all of your years of experience in, in the brown coal mining industry here of a fire being caused in the mine as a result of external bushfire?
That's correct.
Um, it is however, an ever-present risk, is it not?
Absolutely, um, with the, with brown coal, any, any source of ignition is a risk.
Yes, and, and you would agree that the Hazelwood Mine is located in a, a very bushfire prone area of Victoria?
Uh, I would have sort of thought more grassland than bushland, although we do have some pockets of, uh, plantations in that area.
Yes. Uh, and you would be familiar, I take it, with the mine fire policy and code of practice that's in place at the mine? Uh, and in the introduction, uh, to that policy, um, the very first risk of fire that is identified is the risk of an external bushfire spreading into the mine?
Yes.
A- as happened in nineteen ninety-four at the Yalorn Open Cut Mine?
Yes.
So just because it hasn't happened in thirty-five years doesn't mean that there's no risk, does it?
No.
You, you then in your statement talk about your experience with previous fires, uh, significant fires at the mine, and, and one of those was in October two thousand and six. Um, now that was a fire that was caused by a mechanical component?
Yes.
Uh, it wasn't an external fire or, or a hotspot. Um, but your experience with that fire, um, demonstrates how very rapidly fire can spread from a single point of ignition within the mine?
Absolutely.
Uh, so you say at paragraph eighteen that, that it had spread about one and a half kilometres in about twenty minutes?
Yeah, that's correct, on that particular day, the winds were that strong, that the airborne particles that were blowing along the bench, um, were on fire. So it was sort of a, a fireball effect, um, rolling along the bench.
All right, and although this fire occurred in October, um, you've described it as a Black Saturday kind of day. What did you mean by that?
Um, it was the, um, the, uh, probably a, a term that I probably used a bit loosely, but I believe that the conditions on that particular day, especially the wind, and we'd had a, uh, a drought leading up to that, it, that, that particular part of the day, the, um, that particular, uh, part of the year, sorry, um, that the, uh, the, the potential was there for, for fire. And in fact, um, prior to the ignition, we had declared a fire alert.
Nice.
And we had every spray on that was possible in the mine. Operational phases.
On, on the operational phase. So what you mean by Black Saturday kind of day has been a, a previous dry spell leading up to it? Uh, very hot conditions, very windy conditions?
Absolutely.
Very low humidity?
Yes.
Uh, and that's perfect conditions for a fire to take off and spread very rapidly?
Yes.
And really the only thing that you can do, um, to prevent it spreading rapidly is put it out immediately?
Correct.
Now, you've attached to your statement a number of, um, reports arising out of that fire in two thousand and six. Are they attached for the board's information or because you had personal involvement in, in any of them?
No, I didn't have any personal involvement in the, um, presentation of those reports or the writing of them. Excuse me, but, uh, that for your information.
All right. Um, there was another fire, a significant fire in September two thousand and eight?
Yes.
Uh, and this was one that was caused by the flare up of a pre-existing geological hotspot in the mine?
Yes.
Um, where was the hotspot?
It was on the, uh, southern batters.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would you like me to point that out?
Shall we get up the map?
I hope I don't have Romeo's problems.
Uh, maybe he's taken the ruler with him. Is it, is it there under any of the papers? All right, in, in that, that southern area?
And in fact, that, um, clayed area is the area that, um, we had dug out and backfilled that fire hole. That's why you see that, uh, that white area, it's actually the clay.
Quite large white area there?
And we actually developed that into a, um, a bore pit as well.
Sorry, into a
Oh, sorry, a, a, um, a place where we, uh, obtained clay to utilise in other parts of the mine. So that's why it's bigger than what it looks.
All right, now you've also provided a, uh, copy of the report that was, um, produced as a result of a review of that fire in, in two thousand and eight. Again, that's for information rather than because of your personal involvement?
That's correct.
Um, now, with this report, you've not provided any, any follow-up reports or any audits of the implementation of recommendations. Uh, are you aware whether there, any document like that exists?
I'm not, I'm not aware.
All right. Um, one of the recommendations made in the two thousand and eight report is that there should be a risk assessment of the non-operational areas of the mine to determine if further prevention work is required. Do you know if that risk assessment's ever been done?
I cannot recall.
Um, so you, the answer is you don't know?
No.
Now, the January two thousand and twelve fire was again another mechanical fire?
Yes.
Um, that involved one of the dredges. Um, so that was a fire in the operational part of the mine rather than in the worked out area?
That's correct.
Uh, and again, you've provided the report arising from the review and, and some follow-up reports. Did you have any personal involvement in any of that?
No.
No? Although I think you may have had some responsibility for implementing recommendations arising?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, but it's fair to say that that was a structural fire very much about, um, and, and the recommendations were very much about protecting machinery and, and those assets?
That's correct.
So just to return to my question about the risk assessment, um, that was recommended be undertaken in the two thousand and eight review, who would know if that risk assessment had been done?
Uh, I would have to, uh, get our compliance manager to look through and, and find out where that, the case?
That's Mr. Kemsley, is it?
That's correct.
So if Mr. Kemsley doesn't know, he'd be able to find out?
Sure he could.
Now, in paragraph twenty-eight of your statement, you refer to the mine fire service policy and code of practice. Um, and we've already touched on this, you've said you're familiar with it. And you say there that it, um, is based on the nineteen ninety-four, um, policy that generation Victoria had in place, uh, at the time of privatisation?
Yes.
Um, have you actually looked at the two documents side by side?
No, I haven't.
No? Um, is it, you're understanding that the current mine fire service policy and code of practice is very similar to the nineteen ninety-four document?
That's my understanding, yes.
Uh, in the time that you've been, um, working at the mine, has there been a, any wholesale review of the, the mine fire service policy and code of practice?
I'm not aware of any, um, the, uh, if you look back into where I was, uh, involved in that sort of thing, it's only in the last few years where I've taken on the responsibility of the fire service.
Um, because there was a very significant expansion of the mine approved in two thousand and nine, was there not? Um, do you know whether there was any, um, whether the opportunity was taken at that time to have a good look at whether the mine fire service policy and code of practice, which is essentially a nineteen eighties document, was suitable to the new conditions in the mine?
Oh, I'm not aware.
No. You then, um, talk about, uh, the training that is provided to employees of the mine in, um, relation to fighting brown coal fires. Um, now can you describe what train, what training there actually is and, and who gets it?
Yeah. Um, every employer, every, um, employer of the GDF sewers within the mine and any contractor entering the mine and working the mine, uh, is subject to that, uh, training. Um, that training consists, consists of a classroom, um, demonstration and a, a review, um, of what is available to fight the fire, um, the, uh,
And, and does that demonstration use the training slides that you've provided us?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we, we'll look at those ourselves, um, rather than get you to, to actually do the training session for us now? But, but that's used as the basis for the classroom session?
Correct, and then, uh, practical demonstration, if weather allows, at that particular point in time outside with a coal fire in a, um, contained, and it contains to show how it can spread if you hit it with a jet of water and that sort of thing.
All right. And does the practical demonstration extend to actually getting out in the mine and turning on sprinklers on, on the fire service pipe network?
No, but there's a demonstration in the classroom with an actual sprinkler and firework on the safe and effective way to turn on a, on a sprinkler or, um, attaching a hose to a hot
Okay, so that's, uh, basic training that everyone who works at the mine has to undertake?
Yes.
Before the start?
Yes.
Um, is there a higher level of training for, uh, the people who work on the one by seven crew?
Yes, there is, that's called the fireman, I'm trying to emphasise, not fireman, fireman training. And that is where they're taken to a, a different level. And the, uh, the reason for the fireman training And the reason for the fireman training is that if there's any hot works, and I mean by hot works in the mine, it's cutting, grinding or welding within the mine, our policy says that there must be a trained fireman present that can monitor, douse the area, make it safe and control any sparks that may arise. So that is a role that the 1x7 group plays.
Okay. And that then qualifies them to work alongside somebody who's undertaking hot works to ensure that any sparks that do escape are quickly put out.
That's correct. And in addition to those, there are some maintenance personnel that have been trained in that as well so they can help their own oil makers and welders and logs.
And then you say that everybody typically has refresher training every 12 months. What does the refresher training involve?
Exactly the same thing. There's two attachments there. One's slightly modified, and I emphasise slightly modified, to a refresher training. It's called the office, I think the only differentiation on the heading. And yeah, it's basically taken through the same process again.
All right. So there are two sets of slides at attachment nine?
Yes, very subtle difference.
And what process is in place to make sure that everybody actually does their annual refresher training?
Yes, it's recorded during, when you attend. You sign an attendance sheet and there's an assessment done on the training at the end. And then that assessment is kept by our HR department. And they monitor who hasn't been trained or who has. And that's kept on record.
And is there any follow-up if somebody's, for example, been on leave when the training course is provided?
Yes, that's correct. There's periodic lists sent out to the likes of myself or my superintendents to say that these people were missed. Could you please arrange for the next training session that they be caught up?
All right. And that refresher training, does that also involve the practical component or is it just the classroom component?
It's predominantly the classroom component. And as I said, we're permitted outside and conduct the practical. We have the practical demonstration on the desk.
Moving down to paragraph 32, 33 of your statement, you talk about the reticulated fire services water system. And you've provided us with a diagram at annex 11. And I'd very much like to get that up on the screen and ask you some questions about it. Now, Mr. Dugan, what I would like you to do is to explain to us what this represents.
Yep, I can do it. It's schematic, so it's not a very good diagram to be trying to show, but I'll do my best.
Is there a better one or is this the best you're able to find?
I don't think I've got one here. No one, no one, the diagrams have had up here before. But basically, I could probably, if we go to the photo, probably explain it a little bit more geographically.
All right. Well, I'm sure we can switch between the two.
Okay. All right. As Romeo mentioned, the dirty water pumps, which are three, they have the capacity of 600 litres per second in total. They are pumping the water out of the bottom, the lowest point of the mine and the last pond. And that gets pumped into our reticulation system for firefighting and/or dust suppression, which these firefighting service pipelines can do.
And the dirty water comes from those four ponds?
Yes, correct. As the, it's a huge catchment, the mine and the surrounding areas. So water does drain into the mine. And it settles in six ponds by the time it gets to the dirty water pond. And then it pumps the water around. The design of the ponds are such that we can also hold back in the event of a flood. So we have the capacity to, each pond has a valve connected to the corresponding one and we can turn off valves and hold floods back. And/or, in the other way, we can also let more water through to the dirty water pond in summer if needed. So the dirty water pond, the three pumps pump the water around the reticulated system. And if no water is required, any excess water is pumped out via the Works Eflin Pond, which is a foculated pond that treats before it goes into the Hazelwood Pondage. Romeo then said that we have a clean water system. That is the pumps that we use to de-water the aquifer, which is an underground lake under the mine. And the reason we're de-watering that aquifer is to maintain stability in the batters. If we didn't de-water the water pressure out of that, the water would rise in the side batters and we would have the potential for collapse. So they're running at about 200 litres per second. But they have a much larger capacity.
All right. But that's separate to the fire services?
Correct. But they can be opened into the fire service system via what's called a H-section. And that water, that water from the artesian can be directed into the fire system.
All right. So there are different colours on the schematic. Can you explain the significance of those? There is a key. Just...
The colours are basically the diameter of the water mains. Obviously, leading from the bottom, you have the bigger diameter mains, which in this case are anything between 1400mm diameter to 1000 to 750. And then around the outside of the mine, you have your larger mains, which then feed down into a smaller main, which feeds down into your fire service pipe. But most of our fire service pipes, the smallest is 300 diameter steel.
And those pink pipes, they're the fairly, they're the 300 diameter pipes. They appear to follow very closely where the conveyors are and where the operating face of the mine is.
Absolutely. The reason for that is, is to provide coverage over the coal surface areas that we have mined and also provide protection to the infrastructure, which is your conveyors. And then the dredgers can attach themselves to those pipe work as well for their protection.
All right. And we've seen photographs of sprinklers connected into those pipes on the operating area of the mine. Now, moving to the non-operational area of the mine, of course, where the fire burned is where we're most interested in. What are the pipes or as at the 9th of February, what were the pipes in place in the northern batters and in the south-eastern batters on the floor of the mine?
This big gap here is the rehabilitated areas. So we're looking at this void and it's also the Hara Pond and also the Overburden Dump. So there's no firefighting systems on that area because it's quite. Fire service systems in these three areas here, which are probably three level and five will run up in adjacent to the Hara Dam wall. The circle here indicates a tanker filling point. That'll probably be mentioned later. So tanker filling point is where any of the mine tankers can go up underneath and directly have water pour straight in. They don't have to connect up to a main. On the eastern batters, you'll see water reticulation. There was one on one level, three level and five level on the south-eastern batters. And then around the corner into the southern outlet they were talking about today, there's some pipe work.
Now, those pipes along the northern batters in particular look to be much wider diameter than the pipes on the working face?
Yeah, that's correct. They're predominantly 600 diameter along the bottom of the batter on each level. And that's mainly to supply, have that volume of water there to supply any, when it gets smaller, it comes on further there.
All right. And are those pipes just transmitting water to the operational area of the mine? Or is it actually possible to get water out of them into the worked-out area of the mine?
No, they do have sprays on it. There's a monitor, sprays.
Okay. And at what intervals are those sprays?
I'm unsure, but the policy is called for, I'm going off my memory here, roughly about 55 metres, then hydrant, then spray.
Now, in the time that you have worked at the mine, has any of the reticulated pipe network been removed?
Just in this area, and I'll probably bring up the photo if I could.
All right. Bring up the satellite view.
So the pipe work comes around the northern batters, as we saw on the diagrams here. But there was some pipe work in this vicinity here that was taken there. That was due to batter stability issues that we had at the time because of the water seeping out of the pipe work and the likes of coming into cracks. So we're having major issues within that area. And also believe that that was one of the areas, I'm not sure, but the timing that we will be looking at rehabilitating as soon as possible and knocking down those batters there on the top.
All right. Now, while you're pointing at that map, just to be clear, the area of the mine that has been rehabilitated, can you point that out?
From here, right around to there, and it drops down around to there. And this area here is what's called the Hara, which is the Hazelwood Ash retention area.
And am I right in understanding that that area that had been rehabilitated did not burn during the fires in February? So if I understand you correctly, there is one area of pipe that's been removed in your time?
Yes.
Is that right? And that's due to that instability issue?
Yes.
And that's in the batters just to the west of the rehabilitated area?
Correct.
And that area did burn during the February fires, did it not?
It did eventually, yes. That was the area, we'll get to that chronological events, but that's the area that we did put pipe work into. But the actual ignition of the fire was back here on this side of the fire hole.
Just to the west of that clayed area, that is the fire hole that was clay capped not long before?
It's been clay capped over the years, for many, many years. But that area there, we would have, I can't remember the exact date, when we previously had a bit of smoke coming out that we dug out and clay capped.
Now, while we're talking about pipes, I'm going to skip forward a bit in the chronology and ask you to explain what pipes were installed during the firefight. You relate in your statement a discussion you had with the incident controller along the lines of, well, what do you need?
Yes, correct.
What do you need? And you together identified a need for some more reticulated water.
Yes.
So where did you identify that those pipes should go and what was actually installed?
It was identified for those pipes to go into this area here that we put the pipe out of. And we had the good fortune, if I could just go back a step, calling upon our other mines in the area, which was AGL, Loyang. And they provided us with some expertise in pipe work and engineering as we had, we needed some more engineers. So they came over and coupled with their experience, we ended up putting an alternative pumping scenario in the dirty water pond. There was twofold for that. One, we didn't have to rely on electricity if something happened. Two, we were recirculating the water. We weren't bringing water in from the outside. So with that in mind, we then built, under the direction of one of the engineers from Loyang, built this pipeline that completed a ring main right around and connecting into our one level pipeline and went down into the bottom. From there, we did spur lines into these areas. Bearing in mind, by this stage, this was fully light. And we had a lot of obviously different CO issues, carbon monoxide issues. So our workers working in there, we're working in extreme conditions, hence the helicopters were used to help cool down the areas in that area. So the line was to complete a ring main, of which we can put spur lines on. And that was 300 diameter steel pipe work.
So that's the same kind of pipe that you use in the operational area?
In all the other operations, yes. And they come in 12 metre lengths. And they have to be welded together and we can tow about 60 metre to 100 metre in length. So we had worked three sets of welding teams working day and night, welding that together. And Loyang was good enough to, because you just can't snap your fingers, get steel pipe within days. So Loyang were good enough, they had an order on the way and we were able to use their order to start the work off.
All right. Now, just going back in time a little bit, when the pipes were removed from that area, do you know whether there was any risk assessment undertaken?
I'm not sure.
No. And again, is it Mr. Kemsley who would know?
He could, he would be the one that would pass the fire.
But essentially, the work that you did installing new reticulated pipes or installing new pipes that form part of the reticulated pipe network during the fire was replacing the pipes that had been removed?
No, it was, some was, but it was also in addition. We actually put pipe work in around the bottom of the mine where there was actual clay, but we had some coal batters that we weren't able to get to because of the clay covering. It was too hard by machinery to get to it, so we actually put pipe work in there. The other added feature was that we had a separate pumping capacity, which was a diesel versus electricity.
And so this is the first time that you've had an internal source of power to move water around in the fire services system?
That's correct. You asked a question of Romeo before about could a generator, I've asked the question since, and that the size generators it would need to drive our pumping system would be horrendous, huge, we probably wouldn't, I don't even know they exist. So this part, doing this as a separate arm system that also linked into the main as well and so that we can boost pressure, which we were suffering at the time.
All right. So the diesel generator's not sufficient to pressurise the entire system? It's a boosting capacity?
Yeah, these are diesel pumps as opposed to diesel generators.
Oh, okay, yes. Sorry. Shortens the...
That's all right.
All right. Ms. Richards, are you going back to the pipe diagram? We can. Okay. Thank you. I'd just like to ask Mr. Dugan a question. So on that diagram, Mr. Dugan, there's a number of, I'm reading tanker filling port point locations?
Yes, the circles represent tanker filling points.
So on the 9th of February, were you aware, was each one of those available to be used if the water was available?
As far as I've been said, yes, if the pool water was available.
Okay. And could the CFA, could any CFA tanker have access to, could the CFA tanker fill up at those points as well, appropriate fittings?
Yes, they, well, they don't actually need fittings. It's a, it's like a modern bathroom tap that comes up and you drop down like that. They can pull underneath and the water column goes directly into their tanks. The LSA tankers, I think, have an opening on the top, correct me if I'm wrong guys, that the volume of water can go straight in. And/or, they can connect to our fire service mains via their hoses and they can fill it from that. They can connect to the hydrants on our fire service mains.
Provided the water is there?
Provided the water is there.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. There'll be evidence later today from a CFA volunteer who was among one of the first crews to respond on the north-eastern side of the mine. And his experience was of not being able to find tanker fill points and of finding some hydrants that did not have the CFA compatible thread on them. Now, my reading of the mine's fire instructions, there's a clear requirement that all of those hydrants have CFA compatible threads. What process is undertaken to ensure that that is in fact the case?
I'm unaware of us having any non-CFA threads, whether the thread was stripped. Whether the thread was stripped, I'm not sure. You'll have to ask him at the time. Whether the thread was stripped, I'm not sure, you'll have to ask him at the time, whether it was, but as far as I'm aware, all our, and it's been a process ever since I can have been involved with connecting hoses to pipes, that they are CFA compatible for obvious reasons.
All right. But even a CFA compatible fitting would not have been of use once the power was off and the pipe system was depressurised?
No, but there'd be, it'd be a slow process for when they trucks, definitely.
And I think his evidence is that they were able to find a filling point on the northern side, which I'm inferring is the one that's fed from the town water supply.
Yeah. And the, you've also got to bear in mind, this is, we're into night time by that stage or late day, the mine's full of smoke and I believe he's from Westbury, so you haven't got a lot more group that has had training in our mine, so I'm unaware of whether he understands where our pipe work is.
So it requires some degree of familiarity with the mine, does it not, to know where the tanker filling points are?
Absolutely, and that's why, if you read my statement, we embed with the CFA strike teams escorts or guides to, that's one of their purposes.
Right. Now, just one more question in relation to pipes and water supply. It's a requirement in the mine fire service policy and code of practice that there be tanker filling points, so that a tanker at any part of the worked out area of the mine can reach a fill point within five minutes. How do you test for compliance with that requirement?
I haven't been involved in testing, doing an actual time test on that, so I can't, I can't be sure of how it is tested.
But on the northern side, on the northern batters, it's fair to say, I think, that all of the tanker fill points are up at grass level? Is that correct?
This one here is mainly on three or five level.
Right. And the remainder are up at the top?
Yes. But the other, you would see we had ramps and roads, all these levels are half the way that they're really good at tailing it is, they have roads that are accessible. And so the time it takes to get from a tanker filling point to some point within the mine, that was where the five minutes comes from, and I do not know how that's being tested.
All right. But again, it would help to know your way around?
Absolutely.
Or to have a guide who did. Now, another, another piece of fire preparedness that you are responsible for is the weekly preparedness report, or RAG report, as you refer to it in paragraph 34 of your statement. Could we get that document up, please? It's a next year 13 to Mr. Dugan's statement. So this deals with both flood and fire. But on the Monday before the night of February, you give the fire preparedness a pretty good rating in this document. And the only area of concern is that we're forecast looking forward.
That's correct.
There's one item that I'd like to ask you to talk a little bit more about, which is right at the very bottom of that page. One of the issues that is identified as needing to be managed is fire hotspot status throughout the mine. And of course, you've had recent experience of two fires breaking out from that source in the last decade. And there's a note there, the north batter hotspot remains inactive since being plugged four weeks ago, still monitoring. So can I ask you first about the plugging of the north batter hotspot?
Sure. The northern battered hotspot, when we notice it, it is just a small column of smoke, it might be as big as this glass, be wisping up out of the clayed surface. Our belief is that they would have, coal and clay is very, or coal is very fractious, there can be some form of movement and oxygen may find its way down into there. That then provides the fire chain to allow some smoke to come up and work its way up through the clay. That's our signal that there is, there's obviously some oxygen getting in there. And to answer your question directly, what we do, we either send an excavator in there and just dig out that hotspot down to three or four meters and then we bring in fresh clay and then compact it over the top, basically taking the oxygen out of the triangle.
And that's the process that you've been through approximately four weeks previously, so very early in the new year?
Yes.
And then you say, still monitoring. So what was the monitoring that was done for that hotspot?
Monitoring in the mine is eyes and we have lots of people that are looking at that area and indeed even the management and their drive rounds do drive in there occasionally and just to look and see if they can see any signs of smoke or anything escaping there that would tell us that some oxygen has got in there.
All right. Is there any record of the monitoring that was undertaken?
No, it's just visual. And it's something that a two by 12, we have approximately 21 personnel who are operating in the mine along with the 1B7 Services Group, the maintenance groups, and a lot of contractors there that your eyes are going around. And believe it or not, they're very attuned to anything that's blue and smoke, which suggests that that's a fire as opposed to steam that's coming off our Artesia Moa.
So as at the 3rd of February, that hotspot had not shown any signs of activity since it had been recapped about four weeks previously?
Correct.
And is this the one that is just to the east of where the fire broke out on the northern batters?
Correct. Yes, you saw on Dave Shanahan.
According to Dave Shanahan's photograph that we saw yesterday?
That is correct.
And is that the hotspot that is sometimes referred to as Old Faithful?
Unfortunately, yes. And I think I might be responsible for giving it that its name, much to my disgust.
Now, in light of the very serious forecast for the weekend of the 8th and 9th of February, did you update this status report before you left work on the Friday afternoon?
No, can I just say what the purpose of this report's for? This purpose of this report, RAG being, not being a derogatory name, it's red, amber, green. It's a very in-your-face, hit-you-straight-away, short, sharp document on the conditions of within the mine. This was something that we developed with the executive management team during the previous year and it's something that I could give them on the Monday for their annual, weekly catch-up meeting, that they can see if there's anything outstanding that needs their attention further. And that's all it's therefore, it's not a comprehensive preparedness plan. We have another plan for that.
Okay. So the takeaway message from this document is, we're ready, but better keep an eye on the weather.
Absolutely.
Now, on the Friday, the 7th, you were getting ready for a week's leave, is that correct?
That's correct.
In the course of that afternoon, did you become aware of the Hearn's Oak fire to the northwest of the mine?
I did.
And what information did you have about it at that time?
That, I wasn't aware of where it started, but I was aware that there was in the Hearn's Oak area and I know where Hearn's Oak is, so I knew that roughly where it would be. If I could just add further with that, I have a very strong relationship with the local CFA and station officer, I think his correct title is Shane Mina, and he contacts me regularly if he sees that we might be having a total fire ban coming up or the likes, just regular contact. And I'm unaware, and I didn't record it, but he would have had to rung me to say that there was something going on in that area, yeah.
So that's another possible source of your knowledge, that there was a fire burning to the northwest of the mine?
Also, we have a number of members of our work group that belong to the CFA and they carry pages. And we're all getting, already getting workers coming to us from their page messages to say that there was a fire on the Hearn's Oak.
Right. So no question, you knew about it?
Yes.
Now, did you, did you know about the very serious fire weather forecast for the weekend of the 8th and 9th by the time you left work on the 7th?
Yes, I knew it was definitely total fire ban because I think that was even intimated on the Thursday, not on the news, I think.
Yes. It had been declared very early.
Early, yes, two days in a row, yeah.
And have you appreciated that Sunday was going to be the particularly bad day with the wind change coming through at some stage?
I can't recall differentiating between the Saturday and Sunday, but if I had have seen it, yes, it would have been a concern.
But you talked about that day in October 2006 when the fire broke out?
Yeah.
As being a Black Saturday kind of day. Did you understand that you were facing a Black Saturday kind of day on the Saturday and Sunday of that weekend?
No. I just undertook it to be extreme weather, sorry, a total fire ban, which indicates already that for the CFA matrix to determine a total fire ban, it has to be fairly substantial weather.
But we'd had a very hot, dry spell, there had been hardly any rain during January, had there?
Yes, that's correct.
The forecast was for very hot weather and for very windy conditions on the Sunday.
Yeah. I accept what you said, I can't remember reading that it was windy, but I accept it.
You can't remember being aware of that when you left work on the Friday evening?
Can I just talk to you about the, before I left work, what was arranged? Due to that information, a total fire, well, total fire being in your own mind and the reason obviously that it's called that Victoria, really ramps up in your mind that something's, the weather is not going to be conducive. So along with Dave Shanahan, who Dave mentioned yesterday, we talked about that and we decided that, yes, we should be putting out a fire preparedness and mitigation plan for both Saturday and Sunday.
And you have attached that to your statement as a next year 14?
Yes.
One thing that you can help clear up for me is the distinction between a fire preparedness plan and a fire alert.
Sure.
Now, until Mr. Shanahan gave evidence yesterday, I had understood that if there was a total fire ban in place, of course, you would all be on alert, but that there were conditions that might be short of a total fire ban that would cause the person in Mr. Shanahan's position to declare a fire alert. Is that the way it works?
Not quite.
No.
A fire alert, I'm not a computer guru, but I think it's based on the same matrices as the CFA use for their total fire ban, which is humidity, wind speed, temperature and fuel. So we have a, as mentioned by one of the previous witnesses, that on our operational system, it monitors these matrices and it actually starts flashing up on the screens of our control centre tenant and indeed anyone else that can access the operational screen, the what stage the day's going to. And it goes from low alert, medium alert, high alert, extreme, fire alert.
And is that based on actual weather conditions at the time or forecast conditions?
Yes, temperature and humidity, yes. And we have a number of weather stations around the mine, I think there's three, and plus I think they include the one at the Lutro Valley Airport as well.
All right. So a fire alert's not like a total fire ban done in advance, it's done on the basis of conditions at the time?
Correct.
So that explains why in the fire preparedness plans that Mr. Shanahan prepared in consultation with you, no fire alert was actually declared for the Saturday or the Sunday?
No. A fire alert would only be declared by persons on site when the conditions got to that extreme. And if I could just point out with the fire alert, one of the main factors of the fire alert is to get all unnecessary people off the coal surfaces so that they don't run a risk of creating unwanted sparks. So it's primarily energy maintenance and the like. So on a weekend, you already have restricted access to those levels.
All right. So when conditions reach a certain level of seriousness, all those non-essential services are removed from exposed coal areas?
Yes, that's correct. And then they go into a, another, you just don't remove them and sit them in the office. They then go into a patrolling and roving capacity for fire watch.
Okay. So when you left to go on your week's leave in Malakuta at the end of, on Friday the 7th, did you have any, any concern that perhaps you should stay for a day or two to see what went on?
The, I did, I left late because of, we were sort of still monitoring the situation. And I rang, I haven't said here, but I believe I rang my services supervisor, Dean Sewers, who was rostered on, just to ask him how are things out, because Dave had set up some trucks and graders and daisies to be patrolling in, out in that vicinity on the grass level. And he said, it's all quiet, it's, nothing seems to be going on. I do recall on the Saturday morning or somewhere, I, either a news report or something to say that he was contained and that's, that was how I left.
So you were away from Morewell when the fire broke out and had some difficulty getting back due to the fires in East Gibbsland?
Yes, I was out on the water and uncontactable until I got off the water at 3:30, when I saw a number of missed calls. And before I had even pushed a button to ring some of the missed calls, I was contacted by the then production superintendent, Matt Woodell, who explained that we had a fire in the open, had spotted into the open cup. Then subsequently during the course of the evening, knowing, and he did say that Romeo, I'm not too sure, I asked the question who was in charge and he said Ian Wilkinson was still the emergency commander. I can't remember how many calls I did on and off, but then during the night I rang Romeo, because I'd found out he was the emergency commander and he gave me more of an update. And I think I might have rang James later in the night when he changed over. And then I, from news reports, there was fires in, I can't remember the exact location, but in the Orbost area and the highway had been blocked, so I couldn't travel back that night.
Now, let's pick up the story when you returned to the mine. You managed to get back, I think it was on the Tuesday?
Yes, at 4pm. Sorry, no, Monday at 4.
On the Monday at 4.
Yep.
All right. And by that time, the CFA had assumed control?
Yes.
But you were very involved from that point on in the mine's response, the mine's contribution to suppressing the fire?
On the way home, I got my wife to drive so I could talk on the phone and I had some contact with Steve, because I knew he was in the control centre, in the emergency control centre. At this point in time, I knew how busy that Romeo and the emergency commanders would be to be receiving phone calls from someone that's not involved in the fire. So I spoke to Steve about the, what he expected of me when I was coming back. And we discussed then that I will probably take over the day shift running of the emergency commander because of my experience in previous fires.
All right. And that's what you did really from then until the point where the fire?
Day 45.
Right. Now, I don't want to ask you about all of the detail of that suppression effort, but you've given us a very detailed account in your statement, but there were, there are a couple of things that I wanted to explore with you. When you took over on the first day shift on the Tuesday, the 11th, you say there was an emergency command structure that had been established at the mine. And this is at paragraph 48. So the CFA were in control at that time, they They had their own incident command structure. What was the relationship between your emergency command structure and the CFA's incident command structure?
Very close. They're at a local, at a local level, the person in charge at that point was Peter Lockwood on the ground. The ICC was still getting run from, I think, Jorobin, I'm not too sure. But Peter Lockwood, who I know quite well from previous experience, was there at the time and he was man in charge. And I could see from the Monday, when I came back and sat in the background and listened and watched, that the liaison that was going on between the two had set in. And that's how we've run previous fires.
But just to be clear, you had your own command structure within the mine and the CFA had its command structure into which it fitted people from the MFB, Department of Environment, Primary Industries, interstate firefighters as they became available. But throughout the firefight, you had separate command structures. Is that correct? Very close liaison, but not integrated?
No, the integration was happening on the ground in the sense that I developed the, initially, James and Romeo had divided into two rough sectors, north and south. I broke that down into a more manageable sectors called the northern batters, the eastern batters and southeastern batters. And the CFA were, initially it was the strike team leaders because the volunteers were still involved in the first week, but as the fire went on and the ability to get volunteers, a lot more permanents were coming in. And so they had what's called sector commanders operating under their operational commander. And we decided to call our supervisors, sector commanders, so that we could have them sitting at the same level. Then in the initial day, constituted, or not constituted, organised that we would have briefings at six AM, twelve noon and six PM. Now, the reason for that was so that our supervisors slash sector commanders could liaise with the outgoing sector commanders and we could update both groups at the same time with the relevant information that, on history and what our strategies were going for. The CFA in the initial stages were there, but their sector commanders were still getting established and sometimes they didn't make it. But by the end of the first week, there was the integration of the, at those meetings of the CFA sector commanders, our sector commanders, and I would lead the three meetings.
Were the CFA sectors the same as your sectors?
Yes, absolutely.
So there hadn't been initially, you said Romeo and James had divided it into, into two rough sectors. But there's an incident action plan that was developed on the night of the ninth that was in place for the tenth. It does identify four separate sectors.
Yep.
And were they the sectors that were in place subsequently?
No, that was initial thought, but it, with the, as you can imagine, the CFA were evolving. They were, there was equipment and men coming in, the advent of the MFB coming in and other agencies coming in. So it was sort of, in that period of time, I would say that it was, it was pretty hectic and chaotic. So the actual rigidity of those sectors was not, not established until about the Wednesday.
All right. So from the Wednesday, you were operating with the same sectors?
Yes.
But you effectively had two sector commanders in each sector?
Yes, and there was a reason for that.
Well, that's what I'm interested in hearing because that seems to be a doubling up. And a potential source of confusion about who should be doing what and who should be answering to whom.
No, that's fine. No, there's a reason for that. And that is because there was two distinct roles there. The CFA sector commander was in charge of the firefighting appliances, i.e. the telly booms, the aerial appliances, the airport tenders, whatever the gear they had in. Our, our role was to support them and also operate with them our firefighting equipment. So we had, at the height of the fire, we had, could I refer to my nuts? At the height of the fire, we had an additional thirty-three items of mobile plant in above our normal capacity. And that consisted of five, five thirty-tonne all-terrain cranes with crane monitors. And they would be supported by a crew that would man our booster pump trailers that would enable them to get the water pressure. We also had two initially thirty thousand litre all-terrain articulated fire tankers on the site. That was boosted to seven we had operating. We had seven long-reached thirty-tonne excavators as well. So that type of equipment was run by ourselves because we're the subject matter experts or the trained and competent in that equipment. The CFA were trained and competent on their own equipment. But we needed to liaise between each other because we had to work in with one another. Hence the sector commanders would talk to one another during the course of the day and be able, have the ability to move their machines with each other. And if the CFA needed help, for example, their appliances were attached to fire service mains and they had lots of hoses attached. We would have crews come in and work with them to move that machine to another spot. So it was a lot of liaising. The other thing too with a fire this size is it creates a lot of infrastructure damage. And that being roads, drains, a power, water and debris is brought in. To, to even move around, we have to have earthmoving equipment operating all the time to clear access with that.
All right. Do you think there might be some scope to explore closer integration of that command structure when responding to a fire?
Absolutely.
So that you don't have two parallel command structures operating next to another?
It sounds parallel, but in the field it wasn't parallel. But what we, what I would, some of the learnings I would take out of it is that we would have the same communication system that would link both together. We had some form of linking, but it was mainly personal or mobile phone. So I think in the event, we would have some form of communication that could be linked, but that actual structure.
And you mean like the radio communication system? Yes, the mines and the CFAs are quite different, are they?
They are. We, as mentioned before, we had a number of portable radios that we put into the CFA appliances that could be used to, whilst the CFA aerial appliance would be fighting a high batter, he would be in contact with one of our diggers to dig out the hot material and drop down to him. So there's a lot of interaction going on there between the crews.
Now, there's one other area I'd like you to expand on. You talk from paragraph eighty-two onwards about carbon monoxide management. And you comment on, I suppose it's fair to say, different work practices between the crews at the mine and the firefighters who are coming in from outside to respond to the fire. And you said at paragraph eighty-five that there were problems that hampered the firefighting effort. Can you expand on that?
Yes, this was in initial stages in the first week. The CO had come to light in the 2006 fire as an issue with the, in a coal mine. From that, the CFA had developed a, I don't know if you call it a policy, I don't understand their terminology, but had developed and we have somewhere a set of slides that show that it was, what was acceptable in a, in a in a fire front. So we incorporate that into our mine fire instructions. And that was, going on memory here without reading them, below thirty parts per million, which is an atmospheric measurement. We would undertake our firefighting without any hamper, in a sense. And then above thirty parts per million to two hundred parts per million, up to two hundred parts per million. We could work, but in no more than two hours, two hour periods. And that's the way we set off, we started on the first day, as I think Romeo or someone pointed out. We have banks of CO monitors spread throughout the mine and they were issued to our firefighting workforce. And they were carried on their person within the work group. And they were able to ascertain whether they were in that sort of level of carbon monoxide. Now, do you want me to continue?
Please do.
With that, with that, there was some confusion on what the CFA were using. And they, if I can just commit me to read what I've said here. They then required or directed us that we should be having a two-hour break every, after two hours' work.
So where did that direction come from?
The, from my counterpart, the correct terminology at that point in time, I'm not sure, but it was the operation commander on site. That we would have, we would work two hours and have to bring our guys out after two hours. And then the finger testing began.
And there was an equipment?
There was only one.
There was only one and it wasn't working that well?
That's correct. They worked out that the erroneous readings were caused by UV light, the ultraviolet light from the lights and indeed the dirty hands of the firefighters. So the CFA made moves in to fix that. But what it was doing was, it was holding our workforce out longer than we thought, what our own policy said.
And you were able to resolve that?
Yes.
In, by the eighteenth of February?
Can you just show me what paragraph that's from?
Paragraph eighty-six.
Yes.
So at thirty parts or less than thirty parts per million, there was no need to apply the two-hour rule. And it was only when the ratings were over thirty parts per million that people could only work for two-hour shifts.
That's correct. And.
But later in your statement, you suggest that CFA or the firefighters under CFA control continued to work two hours with a two-hour rest?
Yes, that is, that is correct. And I thought that that had been worked out. But I then found out that this was due to a fatigue policy. So their workers would work two hours, then come back out and be replaced by another crew that would go down and take over their firefighting.
All right. So that was for fatigue management rather than?
That's what I was told by the CFA.
Okay. Now, paragraph eighty-eight, you say that as far as you were aware, nobody had to be treated for carbon monoxide exposure arising out of the firefighting effort. Is that referring to mine employees and contractors only?
Yes, that would be the case. From, from what I said by that was, what I meant by that was that they would stay in hospital and be treated for exposures. When the erroneous readings were happening with the UV light and the dirty hands, we had a lot of readings that were going over the five percent, which is different to the atmospherics, it is percentage of CO in the blood. And that was triggering our persons to go to the hospital to report. But we had no person, once they were tested at the hospital and verified that their blood, their percentage of CO was not over the limit.
But these are the people working under your control? Firefighters under CFA incident control is a separate issue? Thank you. I've no further questions for you, Mr. Dugan. The board may have questions. Thank you.
This is before Mr. Eden, if I may. Thank you. Mr. Dugan, Miss Richards invited you to express your learnings and particularly around the integration of the, of the sector supports. Given you're the mine production manager, would you mind indulging in perhaps some learnings around preparation that you picked up on behalf of GDF that you may have done differently?
The preparation, can I just expand on, just to give you a bit of an idea what our preparation was? It hasn't been brought out here, but it may later. But we have a programme when, prior to the fire season starting, we have an extensive slashing programme. And that encompasses about five hundred and thirty hectares of land between the mine perimeter and the mine boundary. We have lessies also that own land in there that are instructed to, if they're not cutting it for hay before that end of the year, we will have it slashed. So there's a, there's that, that is ongoing and that happens every year. There's also a review done of it in the, in the February to see if there's any regrowth. And then if there is, we would slash it again. So in fact, part of mine preparedness, I think we were pretty good. We, you must realise also, we're, we're very focused also on fire coming from the mine out. So caused by plant or the like. So that's hence, that's sort of our focus. Yes, there is the chance of fire coming in. But as I said too, we're surrounded by grasslands. And we took by, by the slashing and the perimeter road that we have around the mine, any fast-moving grass fire, we believe would not come into the mine.
So nothing further in relation to preparation, given the weather, weather situation you've identified in your RAG report? Nothing further you would have done?
At this point, well, I can recollect that, probably leaving this witness standing, I think I should have said that, no, I can't think of anything.
Okay, thank you.
On that topic, Mr. Dugan, you didn't mention that there's also an annual audit report as well.
That's correct.
And could I take you to, you also mentioned the audit report. If I could take you to an extra ten to your statement? That's achievable? Do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I have that. Pardon me?
Can you indicate to the board the sort of work that this covers in the audit?
This audit report is conducted prior to the fire season yearly. And it looks at all the equipment that we have for firefighting purposes is checked and it is not malfunctioning. I.e. the trucks, the number of hoses that we have in, in stock. If, if there is, if there is defects, we fix them directly after the audit. The sprays, the, whether the sprays are working properly, the hydrants, whether they're working properly and the likes, that's tested at the same time. The, the mine also consists of conveyors and these conveyors come out of the mine towards the, to the raw coal bunker and they have a firefighting system applied there as well and that, that is all checked. And ticked off.
Could I take you to page forty-eight or fifty in that report? Could you tell the board what, what that records?
That's the diagram that we had up before, part thereof. And we're not saying that, yep. And it says, is it, we're looking at the same page or is that?
No, we're not. That's the overburden. Which I think is the one, one big part, just.
Yes, that's correct. What it says there is, that there's a, they found that two hydrants on three level, six bore valves on one level and two on three level. Well, the two hydrants need replacing and they're basically given a description on some of the parts that they found that were inactive and needed to be replaced.
On the point about the witness who later on today talks about non-compatibility with CFA, are you aware anywhere on the site where there are any water connections which aren't CFA compatible?
No, I'm not aware.
And so you suspect that if they had difficulties in connecting their equipment, the problem lay elsewhere?
It may do.
Okay. So, and you were asked about the pipelines and on that northern batter pipelines, you mentioned that as a result of rehabilitation, there'd been some pipeline removed there. And also as a result of some defective or leaking pipes, there'd been some removal of pipes there. Is that right?
That's correct.
Is your understanding of the, the mine, the terms of the, of the mine licence of GDF, is that in fact? in fact, you're required to have pipes there under the terms of that licence?
No, I think in the policy, I think it says that we have to have our benches covered in clay, and that is what in fact we have. We have clay roads along the benches, and then the clay's taken out to the top of the batter and to the, to the bottom of what we call the toe, where there is a drain.
But nonetheless, you leave what pipes in there that you can?
Yes.
Okay. In particular, there's been references to this fire preparedness claim, could I take you to an extra 14? Now, an extra 14 has the fire preparedness plans for the Saturday and the Sunday, which I think you've given evidence, you assisted Mr Shanahan in preparation of those documents.
That's correct.
And now it appeared in light of the fact, the weekend coming up was only going to be a high-risk fire weekend, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Could you explain to the board what it is that these guidelines are requiring GDF to start to do?
It sets out there, first of all, that it is a total five, and is there any background messages that we need to give the employees? We also show there where our machines are, i.e. the dredges and the mobile slues and the stacker in relation to the operational face. And then preparedness for fire, it shows there that all pumps, east header sprays must be checked on Friday the 7th. And you'll see down there, operations to operate remote east headers on all face conveyors Saturday night shift. A Saturday night shift in coal mine language is Friday night. So our operational workforce was dampening down the mine during the night in preparation for the next day so that the one-by-seven workforce didn't have as much work to do in dampening anything else. Then it goes on to the manning and avail the resources. It shows you there that the?
Before you leave that, you talk about all unmanned machines to be fully hosed up. Could you explain what that means?
Yes, all the dredges, mobile and mobile slues and the likes, if they're not manned in, i.e. if they're not digging, they must be hosed up, and hosed up means they are connected by a 90-mil lay-flat hose from the machine to the charged fire service main, so that in the event of a fire, the main can just be activated and turned on, and the sprinkler system on the machines commits.
These machines have their own sprinkler systems incorporated into the machines?
That's correct.
And the, there's also talk about the east header sprays and the pumps being checked. Pumps are plated up, what are the east header sprays?
Yes, along each conveyor, along each face conveyor, which is the conveyor that runs along the operational face, there's two water supply pipelines. They are 300 diameter steel pipelines, they're about one and a half kilometres long, which is the length of the conveyor, average length. The east header, in obvious terms, the east of the conveyor, that, that is, has all the valves turned on, but the line is not charged, and that can be activated from the control centre operator, and he can?
But it has a remote control?
Remote control. The water pipe on the other side of the conveyor remains charged all the time. By charged, I meant, sorry, charged means full of water and under pressure.
And that's called the west header, isn't it?
That's correct, and that allows any person to turn on any spray or hydrant.
That's not remotely operable?
No, because it's charged.
Okay. And just, they relocate the portable sprays if necessary within the mine coal area to maximise water spray coverage, what does that mean?
It means we have a number of portable water sprays, they're the same as the sprays that sit on our water pipes, and they're in a triangular pyramid configuration, so they can be lifted by two persons, and they can be put into areas where the actual sprays of the fire service pipes can't reach, and that's, they've sort of plugged the gaps, so to speak, on the coal benches, operating benches.
The next line talks about intermittent sprays. Why are they intermittent? Do they sprays on intermittently from Saturday?
Yes, intermittently means that we continually wetting down the mine surface, if we turned all the sprays on on the mine surface, we just about flood it, and we wouldn't be able to dig any coal. So intermittently, we would have it on for a couple of hours, stop it, go to the next one, turn it on, stop it, and by doing that, it maintains, all the coal remains damp.
That's from seven o'clock in the morning, but two down, they're talking about operating a remote east header and all face conveyors on the Saturday night shift.
Yeah, that's, that's because the one-by-seven services are not in at night, and you have a, would have a health and safety issue walking along coal benches, turning on sprays and on and off. So we help them by having it remotely controlled, and there's four east headers that can be turned on from the control centre. So that's, that's basically creating a fire break or wetting coal so that it doesn't have to be done as quick in the next day.
You've heard some of the former members or workers in the, particularly the SECV days, talking about wetting down the coal surfaces. Was this done?
Yes, yes.
This weekend?
Yes.
Okay. They also talked about having availability of tankers and the like. Can you explain to the board what tankers this requires to have available and other appliances?
Yes, that's, we have two CFA, ex-CFA fire tankers, which are a 30,000-litre capacity, one stationed at the mine, the other one stationed with Diamond Protection, who our emergency provided. We also have two 30,000-litre all-terrain articulated water cars, water tankers, and they have the capacity to either supply water to firefighting efforts, or indeed they have two monitors remotely controlled from the cabinet that they can hit large structures or batters with.
It's a convenient time. I wanted to ask a question that you may want to deal with after we've resumed. In paragraph 25 of your statement, you referred to significant learnings from previous fires. I like your comments on whether one of the potentially significant learnings from this fire was that there ought to be taken into account significant health risks from a fire in a mine so close to a town.
I think you're right. I don't disagree with that, but at the point in time, we were fighting a fire, and you're responsible for the firefighters and the personnel in the fire, so my primary aim along with the CFA is to protect the health and safety of their firefighting workforce. So you're sort of, your consideration is A first.
A is your fire personnel, your mine personnel, but query, and query whether B is the people in the adjoining area, or B is the operating area protection. I gather the, the lives of the people in the adjoining area would be B if you had to be put to it. But from what you're saying, there wasn't consideration given to that which goes under life and death, but significant health risks?
Yep, you're right there, but we had the Moor, the Moor township was suffering smoke from week one. That was firmly on our minds at any time. Our strategy was to knock out the Northern Batters, which is closest to the freeway, which is closest to the township. So most of our firefighting efforts were aimed in that area to knock that down as soon as possible.
And that was, say, as against the Southern Batters, because of your perception that something needed to be done for the citizens of Moorwell, rather than with the Southern Batters, where you could have easily put attention. You chose, because of the reasons you mentioned, to direct it to the Northern Batters.
Absolutely. In the initial stages of firefight, the first two days, we operate under, as Mr Lapsley indicated, primacy of life, I think it's communication to the public, and then critical infrastructure. We had no primacy of life issues, and we, and at that point in time, no public issues, as in communicating, because the CFA were the combat authority. Our third one is the infrastructure. But within the second or third day, the attention was turned to the smoke that was enveloping Moor and just coming off that.
So it wasn't in the express priorities, but you included it because of its relative significance as assessed at that time?
Absolutely. And just to, just to ratify that, I used to participate in the morning briefings of the CFA and MFB when they come on site, and you had a lot of people coming from interstate or other parts of the state, not knowing the area, and really not knowing the reason. They're there to fight a fire, but one of the things that we made plainly clear on the day, you are here to try and stop the fire, to stop the people of Moor getting inundated with smoke. Obviously, health and safety is your number one concern, but the main strategy, main priority, is to stop this smoke getting into Moor. There's no question.
Yes, thank you. We'll resume at two o'clock.